Manager.
Wendy getting food, but she here.
Um. So, good morning, everybody. Um, I mean Wendy just went to get a little coffee or something, but if we want to go ahead and get started. So, I know that, and before we get into questions, Commissioner Alum was on the Zoom yesterday and didn't get to answer, ask her question, so before we get into questions, just check to see if she's on the Zoom and if she's got a question that she didn't get to ask yesterday. Is she there?
Yes, she is online. She has not unmuted herself, so I'm not sure if she wants to ask those questions now or if she'll wait.
If she wants to wait? Okay, just wanted to acknowledge that, that since she's not here in person, that, um, and she had let me know that she had a question to ask. Okay, Keith? Uh, manager, turn it to you or Keith?
Go ahead and get started.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, today is a much shorter day. We'll be wrapping up at 12. Just a reminder, yesterday, we did some financial highlights from the Finance Department, the Tax Department, the Budget Department. You had a deep dive into some ARPA progress, and then we had a productive youth home discussion, even though it was late in the afternoon and everybody had just about had enough. Today, everybody's back, bright and fresh. There is food and there will, uh, in the Innovation Center, and there will be lunch boxes provided, so you can take those and head out when we're done. Today, we're going to talk about, uh, have a discussion about living wage updates and possible solutions to some questions or options, and then we're going to have a discussion about the, how the longtime homeowner, homeowners relief fund has been doing and possible changes to that, and then we're going to have an update on the Board of Elections space in preparation for the upcoming national, local and national elections. And then after that, there will be time for Board to discuss priorities and/or answer any questions. And with that, we're ready, I think, to have the living wage discussion.
And while we're transitioning, I will say Commissioner Alum did have a question about the youth home. She wanted to know what the different phases, if that would mean additional beds beyond what we were originally planned to have. I told her we'll get an answer to that and send it out to all of you.
Okay. Can you, can you come to the mic? Thanks. So Commissioner Alum, if you're listening, I think Heather has an answer for us.
No, I can hear.
So, repeat the question, please?
So Commissioner Alum, since we can hear you, go ahead and ask your question.
Um, this is about the youth home?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. I was wondering, in priority three, there was an ask for additional beds. Is that in addition to what we've already approved with the new youth home?
No, priority.
Right. Priority three would be the, the youth home fully open, so it'd be all the beds that you guys have currently approved. It would be all of those beds being occupied, so nothing above and beyond what is already been approved.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
This is Heather Walker, one of our.
Yes, it is.
Very good at her job. Thank you, Heather.
We've got quite a few new faces around. We just kind of get used to, familiar with who they are, yeah. Okay, who's talking? It is, I know, I saw Kathy Everett, Kathy Everett Perry? Yep, they're ready. Ladies and gentlemen, Derek Bowens is in the house. I just want to say welcome, Mr. Bowens. Good to see you.
Good morning. Yes.
Oh, now, this is better. Yeah. So, we're going to spend a few minutes with you this morning discussing our current living wage policy as well as our salaries and how they compare to the federal poverty guidelines. We will also give some cost projections for if you should decide to increase our living wage, and we'll answer any questions you may have. So I will turn it over to Dara.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, our first slide we're going to start off with is just talking about setting a living wage. Basically, by having a living wage in place, it helps reduce poverty, it empowers our employees, and it benefits society as a whole. Um, we recommend that this wage be reviewed and updated on an annual basis, and our current recommendation that we're asking for for Durham County is going to be eighteen dollars and forty cent, but that's upon you all's review of the policy and how you all want to proceed with the living wage. Next slide.
Would that include all DPS employees also?
We actually are going to have a conversation around the DPS employees toward the end. I think Budget has some information they're going to be sharing on this.
Yep.
And I think that this slide deck is a little different from the one that we sent, but that's okay. Um, so, we're going to roll with it. So, basically, the living wage for a full-time salary would be thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, we based it on a number of factors, but this, this one right here is actually based off of the current policy we have in place, which is to have our living wage set at least seven and one-half percent above the federal poverty guidelines. Those guidelines are actually pretty low. It's thirty thousand dollars, and that seven and a half percent is just two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars extra. And so what we're looking at is to do something that is more aggressive than that, because giving someone just fifteen, uh, fifteen dollars and fifty cent or for a forty-hour work week or sixteen dollars and fifty-four cent is not a lot in order to be able to take care of a household. Um, on this slide, there's one typo on the, uh, there's two forty-hour work weeks. It actually should be, we have additional work week schedule here at Durham County, which is a special schedule. We have two of those, and they consist of around forty-six hours, so that's why this slide is not, should not be in here, but, um, just want, want you guys to know that that may look a little confusing, because those individuals will always make more than the living wage, because they have the special schedules that have a built-in required amount of overtime that's built into them.
So, one, so one of these is forty-six hours and one is forty hours?
Yes. So, most employees in Durham County are set with a thirty-seven point five hour work week. That's where you find most people. However, we do have some schedules that are forty-hour work week schedules here at Durham County, and there's a slight difference in those, but those people will still make the same annual salary, but their hourly rate would be based different. So, the individuals who work in mostly public safety, safety positions is where you always will find the individuals who have the special schedules that have the required overtime built into them, so their salaries may be a lot more. And so when we, when we deal with the living wage and you set that, you have to make a special note regarding those individuals, because they may see the policy says, or the guidelines may say one rate, but their rate isn't set that way. It's set on their annual salary.
I, I think some of us caught the typo, but could we just say on camera for clarification that the fourteen seventy-seven one is the one with the forty-six? Is, would I be correct in stating that? Not the fifteen fifty?
It's forty-two hours, I'm sorry.
Well, forty-two, excuse me, yeah, so it's not, so that's the forty-two hour. I just wanted to be said, so at least we said what the number was.
Yes, and we can send an updated slide deck over as a follow-up to this conversation.
And Dara, can you pull the mic just a little closer?
And I just wanted to add that on this slide, we're focusing on the fact that the living wage is an annual salary at thirty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, we can go to the next slide.
So, one other question.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Heather.
What percentage did that increase? What, what's the increase, percentage of increase?
In terms of.
From last year to this year? So, if we go to the eighteen forty?
Oh, we have that.
What percentage increase would that be?
If we have that on a different slide, don't we, what it would cost to implement the eighteen forty?
Yes. Okay, so this is showing us the employees that we currently have under the eighteen forty. Durham County has done a fabulous job of maintaining our pay plan. We pay very well. Our lowest paid hourly rate currently is sixteen dollars and ninety cent, and we have only four employees at that, but for the total number of employees that are under the eighteen forty is thirty-three employees.
And so is our recommendation to go from the sixteen ninety to the eighteen forty?
Correct, and moving those employees forward.
And so that's a nine percent increase.
I think Budget's going to switch out the slides. Just give them one moment to do that.
And so while they are switching it out, what I would like for the Board to, to know is that, so we currently do have a living wage policy. What HR is recommending is that we take a look, and we're not asking for a decision today, but that we take a look at that living wage policy and see if we want to adjust it beyond, I think it's a seven and a half percent above the poverty?
Yes, correct. In some of our research, we wanted to make sure we looked at what's currently going on today in a bigger picture. So, we just can't, the federal poverty guidelines look, looks just at how you feed people, and those guidelines are used in other places on how they determine how, how to get people services. However, it doesn't account certain things like healthcare and daycare costs, things that people really have gone on to be able to actually function in society successfully. And so moving our wage forward would be able to put us in a, in a better place to support our citizens and our hard, dedicated workers here at Durham County to do so. So, that's what we're looking at in a bigger picture. Um, when we get to the implementation, you'll see what it looks like to move the individuals forward to, to this particular rate, and also, we want to just talk about some of the things that may happen in doing so. We did look at the recommendations that were supplied us as well around looking at a twenty-three hour rate and a twenty-four hour, which we don't recommend, because it will cause a lot of other issues. It's very, very expensive, for one, and then when the compression that it causes in the rest of the organization will be an issue that we would have to address as we go along as well.
And I will add, one other thing, there was a question about was DPS, the DPS employees considering this? So, what you will see, we were not considering giving this to DPS employees now. Our budget team will come forward and share with you that that is a very exorbitant cost if we were to do that, and we would have to make some very different decisions. Keith said it best yesterday. When we agree to do one thing, it means we agreed not to do something else. We would have to agree not to do a lot of things if we were to include all of the DPS employees in this. Doesn't mean that we can't, but if we do, we have to make some different decisions about other things.
And can you just clarify, what is the cost for just the thirty-three, um, employees to get, to get them up to eighteen forty?
The implementation cost would be twenty-nine thousand, fifteen dollars.
Oh.
So, that's pretty affordable to be able to make the change.
I saw the relief come over your face.
I mean, that's Trump change.
I'm about to shame my colleagues. Y'all, they sent this out to us already. Aren't you reading that off of a slide?
Yes, ma'am.
If y'all don't do y'all homework before we come in here, so it is on the next slide. It is on the next slide. I'm picking on everybody this morning.
I, I, I did see it before, but I didn't remember.
And, and I would also just note that the city of Durham has already set their twenty-twenty-three living wage, and theirs is seventeen dollars and sixty cents. So, we've positioned ours just a little more ahead. They already have some advantages on us when it comes to, um, hiring, and so we're trying to make sure we position ourselves in order to be able to attract and retain the highest talent here on this side of the, um, of the street.
Street.
Well, we appreciate that. And it's, you know, we, yeah, we have the information, but it's good to hear you go over it, so that helps to ground us in what those numbers are. Yeah, thank you.
So, I'll also talk about, since we're, the slides are up now, let me see if we can get through to where we... Okay, so this is what the slide was supposed to be like, so there wasn't any confusion in that nice little chart that wasn't supposed to be there, but this talks about our, um, looking at a thirty-seven point five hour work week in our full-time salaries. We've covered this, but on the next slide, you'll see the implementation cost if we were to do the twenty-three dollars an hour and the twenty-four. And that does not include covering compression, because when you go to twenty-three dollars an hour and twenty-four dollars an hour, you're going to have a lot of compression caused that we would have to factor in. Um, as noted, this does not include EMS in the Sheriff's Office due to the special, special schedules that they have on this particular slide, when you see that.
Keith, can you get in the mic so Commissioner Alum can hear it?
Twenty-four dollars an hour at roughly forty hours is, is forty-nine thousand, nine hundred. We'll call it fifty thousand dollar salary at twenty-four dollars. Remember yesterday, you heard from the youth home a recommendation for those employees to be at fifty-two. Guess who else heard that? It was sitting right over here on the edge, the sheriff.
Yeah.
And he's ready to do that for.
Yeah.
Attention officers. So, there, you're working towards twenty-four directly or indirectly in a number of ways, so keep that in the back of your head.
And the detention officer classification and the youth home council classification are ones that are, we have the relationship tied to them, so they are basically the same type of position, but they're just in different areas, so they would be looking at receiving anything that they, the other individuals receive the same way.
Is there a timeline, um, a plan that could be put into place for making it happen over time?
So, it depends on what you want to make happen over time. So, the eighteen forty can be pretty easy to make happen. That is something.
No, to get to the twenty-four?
So, to get to the twenty-four, I would recommend maybe, um, as we review the salaries on an annual basis, to make sure that living wage is set, where you all feel we should be to get to the twenty-four and how long that should take. So, should it take four years for us to get there? What can Durham County afford to be able to do each year to work toward that? Um, there's a lot going on. We still don't know what's going on with the economy, so that's up for you all to determine and advise us on how you want to operate.
But I would say we would probably have another compensation study by the time we're reaching that point, if we were to stagger by years, and then, of course, it may be a whole different scenario as to where we are and where we need to be.
I have a question. How, how does this mesh with the recommendations of the compensation study? Because we haven't even gotten that yet. So, I'm also wondering, will some of the recommendations in the compensation study actually address the eighteen forty? And even helping us get towards, you know, closer to the twenty-four? But, so that, that's one of my questions. Um, I do want to note that, you know, as we heard yesterday, seventy-five percent of our funding goes basically towards, well, what was it?
Personnel costs and education.
And education, which, um, you know, that's taking up most of our funding, and so that doesn't leave us with a lot of other money to address other needs in the community. So, it's just a balancing act, really. It's, it's really difficult.
It is.
But we, we really have to, that's the reality that we face. I think you put already estimated the compensation study is going to cost us between seven and eleven million, and then.
That's a lot, that's a menu of items. That's a cola, potential cola increase for employees, cost of living related to inflation, and pay for performance and the MAG study. So, between those three things, it's going to be anywhere from seven to eleven million dollars.
And then basically ten million to, which is all, you know, for DPS staff, um, most of that. So, anyway. Yeah, anyway.
And so Commissioner Alum has a question, but can you, yeah, Commissioner Alum?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Alum. Thank you so much for this. I am really excited that we are, you know, pushing and having this conversation. I will just put out a disclaimer from the beginning. I feel like we should do the twenty-three still, and I know, um, Chair Howardton asked my first question about, uh, breaking this down in a timeline of when we can reach that twenty-three, because, yeah, if we do this planned out for five years down the road, the cost of living in five years is going to be higher than twenty-three, and we're just going to be chasing, uh, down a living wage. My other question was, in the implementation cost, is that how much it will cost to just bring those thirty-three or two-hundred-and-eighty-eight employees to that amount, or does that also include, um, stretching the people who are already at twenty-three and lifting them up as well?
So, it does not include the stretch, the compression piece. It only includes the cost of bringing them up and the fringes that go along with it, because we do have additional costs that it may cost for our benefits and retirement piece. All of those things have been factored in, but not the compression piece. Um, I think that answers the question, but the twenty-three dollars would have to be best on a plan, as you guys have kind of mentioned before, to be able to create a schedule to do that. I don't think we addressed your question yet, Commissioner.
Jacobs, I will say that the comp study preliminarily does bring the salary up to eighteen dollars, a little lower eighteen, not quite eighteen forty.
I, I think Commissioner Alum brought up a point that I was gonna, as Commissioner Carter said, wait to the end to ask, but since it's been brought up. I recognize that these numbers only bring us to twenty-three, right? And again, I'm not an oppositionist to this, but anybody who works, anybody who has had to manage, you all know the chaos that this is going to cause, right? So, I just, I think for some people who are watching this, they're not seeing the, the internal chaos that it would cause, because you might have a person that's been working ten years, somebody who's been working one year, and we shoot everybody to twenty-three. And you all who work in HR and anybody in here who's been a manager, you know exactly what's going to happen. That ten-year person is going to want to know, how is it that Jeff just walked in here today and got the same thing that I got? So, to Commissioner Alum's point, yes, this brings everybody who is below eighteen forty or below twenty-three or below twenty-four, but recognize, as soon as we do that, where's Dara? Your internal audit going to start getting a lot of emails, because somebody's going to try to understand, why didn't I get this? I've been dutiful. If, if we can make Jeff at twenty-three, then I need to be at thirty-two or twenty-seven. So, I do, again, want to throw that out there, because, and Kathy, you've done this a lot longer than I have. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I have a ten-year employee or multiple ten- or fifteen-year employees that are at, let's just say, twenty-one dollars, and then I bring that employee and everybody else that walked in door to twenty-three, what's going to happen in your office?
Grievances.
That's the, oh, and so I, that is not me saying I don't want this to happen, but I want y'all to know that this one point six million is the base, and I don't think that we have, are, we didn't put that here, but to Commissioner Alum's point, this just brings everybody here. That's the base of what we will be asking for, and then in six months, it would probably double, if not quadruple for some people, so I did just want to throw that out.
Right. But with the comp study, we are looking at those compression issues, so if we were to go along with those recommendations, it will address those longstanding employees and not bring people up and not address them at the same time.
Okay.
I think she has another slide.
Okay, and this slide right here is what it looks like if we did include those special schedules, which would greatly increase their salaries as well. So, there's a slight difference, well, there's a great difference there in those. We don't recommend doing that, because as we mentioned before, they are guaranteed to make that annual salary, and plus more, because not only do we have mandatory overtime, as you all know, these areas have a, a huge need right now. They have a lot of vacancies, so the employees actually work a lot more than that base of mandatory overtime that's set on those schedules.
So, would you, would you talk a little bit about the overtime? Somebody mentioned it yesterday, about sometimes you can't get overtime pay.
Angela Nun brought that up. It was a little confusing. Some of her employees didn't quite understand why they weren't getting overtime. I don't, I'm not sure HR is prepared right now to know the youth home pay schedule, but maybe you can answer.
I was, was not familiar with what Angela was speaking about. I was a bit confused. She said she herself was confused, so I was confused by her explanation, so we probably should speak with her to see what exactly is going on.
All right, thank you.
And just in general, and this is from my ten-years ago HR experience, but for people that don't work a traditional forty-hour work week, if you're working a thirteen, eighteen-hour shift, my husband's a firefighter. He works twenty-four hours. His overtime, he can't earn overtime like everyone else. It's based on the actual number of hours that you physically work. So, if there is a holiday in a work week, and I've worked thirteen hours a day, I'm at, and I worked three days that week, I'm at thirty-nine hours, I may get paid for that holiday, but because I didn't physically work, I have to work another hour to get to forty hours, and then I can start earning overtime. But if, for those, those shifts that are not your forty-hour work week shifts, it's different, and you have to physically work a certain number of hours before it triggers a time, and it's really not just overtime, it's really the pay. Time and a half is what people are looking to get. You can't get time and a half hours if you haven't physically worked a certain number of hours. That's where.
Just like our schedule is thirty-seven and a half, so individuals who work a week, they're not eligible for overtime if they go beyond, unless they work that additional, what, two and a half hours?
And this is not just youth home employees. This is EMS.
Right.
Detention officers, almost any twenty-four-seven operation has a unique schedule, and it is complicated. David Aides in our office is a former firefighter, and he's tried to explain it to me. I'm still struggling, still struggling to, to get my head wrapped around it, forty-eight-hour weeks, and it's all sort of complicated stuff, but.
Yeah. And they're subject to FLSA, which drives a lot of that.
But again, this number does not deal with compression issues that can be brought up in any number of ways, including those people who are already above twenty-four dollars an hour. Would they go to twenty-eight because the new person just jumped to twenty-three?
Absolutely.
All that would have to be taken into account.
Yeah.
So, this slide is for Keith.
Yeah, I spoke to Paul LaSour in DPS. I know this may be of interest to several Commissioners that asked about what would happen if we included DPS. Hourly workers, he told me, were about five-hundred-and-eleven that DPS has now. They're currently at an average hourly rate of around seventeen and a half dollars, so to move them to eighteen forty would cost them, and indirectly, they would request from us, because this would be over and above state levels, about seven-hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars to get to eighteen forty. Twenty-three dollars an hour for those five-hundred-plus employees, and this is just simple math, not comp, not, not, um, compression issues. To get to twenty-three is four-point-five million, twenty-four would be five-point-three. Basically, he said it's about eight-hundred-and-fifty, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars for each dollar increase in hourly. Remember, twenty-four dollars an hour is fifty thousand dollars a year. Are teachers getting hired at fifty thousand dollars a year? So, you have some real, you have some massive compression issues if you start bringing in education salaries that are state-driven, if you have other types of workers getting fifty thousand in a, a year at twenty-four dollars an hour, and potentially a teacher. That's not included in these numbers. It's another two or three thousand employees, two thousand employees, that may be getting hired at state salary levels lower than fifty thousand base salary. Now, I'm sure they may be up above that, once you add in the additional funding, the, um, teacher supplement you all pay averages six to seven thousand dollars per teacher. Some big issues, but the number gets significantly larger. Two-plus million dollars for twenty-four, dollars an hour for county employees without dealing with compression issues, four to five million dollars for DPS-related folks without dealing with compression issues.
Commissioner Carter? Just quickly want to say that, um, I didn't balk when I looked at the co, implementation cost for both our staff and for the five-hundred-and-eleven employees at DPS at eighteen forty. I was pleasantly surprised that that seemed, I thought, doable. I was pleasantly surprised that that seemed, I thought, doable, and I think I will still stand by that. I do think it would be important for us to see the results of the DPS classification and compensation study. So like you're saying, Keith, how would 1840, you know, affect the other costs district-wide? And presumably, that's what the school board's gonna do, and they're gonna come to us and say, you know, our comp class study says this, we're also trying to pay as close to a living wage as this, taking everything into consideration, you know, we request this. But when I saw the number last night, I thought, that, we can do that. So anyway.
Just so you know, the part of the $10.8 million request that DPS made, they came and gave a presentation to you, 4-plus million of that is in preparation for their comp study. Their comp study may already be at $18. We'll have to see. So that number may already be paid for in terms of their request. So it may not be 742,000. Again, to your point, Commissioner Carter, we have to see what their compensation study says. But remember, of the 10.8 million, 4-plus, I think it was like 4.8 million of that was for their comp study preparation for increases related to that. In fact, 95% of their entire request was related to salaries. It was state salary increases of 2% or 3%.
Or tax.
Then the other half of it was comp study potential increases, made up almost the entire request this year for DPS.
Sort of like fixed costs, really not much of an expansion other than salaries.
I will say, much like Commissioner Carter and Commissioner Jacobs, the two numbers at the top didn't make me blanch. I did see the juxtaposition between what EMS and what the sheriff's office would get. I will be honest, 1.5, 2.5 million, 2.8 million, that did not make me blanch. But what I am, what I do wanna elevate, I don't know if people just glossed over it when Keith said it. When we think of, I'm not even gonna do lateral entry. If we're thinking about what a teacher, what the state rate sets a teacher at, at $35, $36,000, which, while we don't like it, that's why we're generous enough to say we would do a minimum of 6.5, so let's just go ahead and make that 7. So what we've essentially said is, we have absolutely no problem, if we were to do that last one, I just, again, I'm just trying to elevate this because I don't know how many of y'all are doing math, we have no problem hiring a teacher at $36,000, giving her $7,000, he or she, $7,000, getting them to 42, but then we're gonna give the bus driver $10,000 more. I just want y'all to know, that's exactly what that slide is saying. So we would, not just, but the class, about the assistant, the cafeteria worker, and again, you're looking at a person who was raised by the cafeteria worker, raised by the bus driver. I wish my mama could've got this, but again, that compression issue comes up, that, so I just wanted us to think through all of those nuances. I wish we could do it all. And then I'm also thinking, the slide yesterday, the tax, a penny is 5 cents, right?
Five million dollars.
Five, yeah, good gracious, thank you. Well, a penny, when I first got here, a penny was 4.7 million, and now it's $5 million. So we add this 5.36 million to that other 2 million because that would be our employees. And so automatically, we're looking at at least a 1.5 cent tax increase, something like that.
Unless you cut other things. Remember, there's always the option to not do everything, but yes.
I'm just trying to do the math.
All things being equal, your math is getting there, yes, ma'am.
I'm done.
We have not gotten a comp study in school yet, have we?
Right.
So we, this conversation is premature. If we don't have their comp study.
It was more an exploration of the concept and potential cost, but yes, you are absolutely correct. We do not know what their comp study has said or will say yet.
Okay.
And we don't know if we'll have it before. We should have the intelligent conversation about it. I just know everybody's watching this one today.
Right.
So, yeah.
We don't know if we'll have it before we need to make decisions either. So that's why we wanted to bring this before you, to give you enough time to kind of ponder where things would land with this.
So.
Because we know the ask is there.
In summary, and I just, between you all thinking about it, Commissioner Jacobs made the, I showed you yesterday, $30 million in increased costs related to schools in the county. $6 million increase in our funding for salary and benefits changes that were made in this fiscal year, we have to pay for, for county employees. We showed you 7 to 11 million for potential MAG, COLA, and performance for us. And then, remember, I just said, the entire $10 million request from schools is state salary increases plus their consultant. That's 30 million, up to $30 million in '23, '24 for compensation-related issues only between schools and Durham County folks. It's an expensive business to consider. Nothing wrong with that, just wanted you to understand the numbers.
Just a second, Wendy, let me finish this.
I'm done, thank you.
Let me finish this statement. Most of us are gonna be meeting with the school folks in the next couple of days, and their conversation will be around funding. So what you're saying is there's such, there's uncertainty as to what kind of, what we can have, say to them about this conversation. Because that's what I'm getting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is what is, there's no certainty that we can have at this point as to how, how much funding we can commit to.
To schools?
Yes.
You, I don't know quite how to answer that question, Commissioner. You all are welcome to commit as much funding as you want to give them. What there is not certainty of is what their study is going to say. It may, their max, their version of a compensation study may say that the bus drivers need $19 an hour, it may say only $18 an hour. What you can say is if you choose to go to $18.40 an hour, you're setting a floor for our employees, and then you can decide that you're willing to set that floor for DPS. And it may be higher or lower than what their compensation study says, but it's higher than what it is now for them, which is 1750. What we don't know is of the $4 million they have asked you all to support, remember, they have a $10 million request from you guys, half of that is for state-related salary increases and cost and insurance for those folks. That's sort of automatic to them. And then the other half of that 10 million, let's just call it 5, is for their compensation study. If that compensation study says, oh, it's $19 an hour and it's paid for in that, in that $5 million, it's not even gonna cost you 742 if you give them $10 million. There are a lot of moving parts.
Can I also make a comment as well, that as the board has that discussion, that they, to share, the decision needs to be made in the context of the horizon. And there are many things on the horizon that are coming up. We talked about yesterday, the cliff that's coming with the ARPA dollars no longer being here. So we have to plan for that.
Are you talking about the social workers and the nurses?
Yeah, the social workers, the nurses, any investment that we've made that we feel needs to move forward. We've made some investments related to childcare.
Right.
So in our modeling, we will plan for that. DPS has a larger cliff, they had a larger infusion of dollars. And I know they've been planning for that, but when their cliff happens, what's the strategy? So as you have those conversations about compensation, the board also needs to ponder what's on the horizon for their dollars. That's something we'll have to think about as well. But it's not necessarily a direct explanation, but just want to share that because that's what we will present to you as we get into our budget work sessions. We didn't spend time on our five-year outlook, but there are lots of expensive things down the road that we need to put in the context as we plan for future pressures on our property tax base.
And if I can just add to that, Commissioner Alom has something too, but I would advise you all to really be good listeners as you always are and to try to refrain from committing to anything because there are a lot of complex and unknown issues right now that we're going to have to discuss. We haven't even talked about the construction costs that have increased that from six months ago, that they said a school would cost X amount and the cost is doubled, that they're gonna be looking to the county to cover. And so there are a lot of additional asks that are going to be made. So it's within their right, and I expect for them to come to you to say, hey, this is what we would need.
They have nowhere else to go.
Right, 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 right. So I would just advise you all to accept all of that, to note everything that they're asking for, and then we'll come back together and help us all figure this, to figure it out.
And just trust the process.
I know that, Wendy, your hand's up, but Neta has had hers up quite a while. Do you mind if we just go to, okay, Commissioner Alom, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Howerton. Yeah, I'm listening to this conversation, and I understand, you know, we are still trying to figure out what the schools are, what the breakdown of their ask actually is, whether it includes salary increases. I'm just like overarching in this conversation, and I think it happens pretty much every year when we have this conversation around salaries. I get concerned that, you know, we seem to be looking at it as just dollar figures instead of the fact that these are, you know, people that we're trying to support and provide a living wage to, making sure that they're able to put food on their tables, take care of their children, and that's really what I'm seeing when we look. I know there's a dollar cost to that, but I think our employees and the staff in Durham County and DPS is one of our greatest assets, and being able to invest in them to be able, to make sure that they're able to live in Durham, not just barely, like, struggling to make it by, but actually being able to survive and provide for their families. And this is more like a philosophical point that I just wanted to make because I just get concerned when we start looking at people as numbers instead of as human beings.
And I don't think anybody did that.
Yeah, I just.
I don't know. Which one do you want to go next? Joanne, do you want to respond to that?
I was just gonna say thank you to Commissioner Alom for bringing that up. I just wanna also share for the board's consideration, as we overlay equity principles into our budgeting process, one of the things for your consideration is that as we look at just salaries and increases, that, and I'm glad I have Director Harris behind me, who has deep knowledge around just the social services and who actually participates in our programs and services, and often, it may be employees. And when you raise certain salaries, people have to make decisions because they may be receiving housing subsidies, social, childcare subsidies, and, you know, certain grants for college for their families. And that also has to go into the calculus when we look at equity of whatever those increases are because I can be knocked out of those benefits that I need to live and thrive, and that may be at a cost of $20,000, $25,000 that is added to whatever I receive. It's just a complication that we also have to consider, not saying yay-nay, but when we look at salaries, that they could get five extra dollars an hour, but are they losing $25,000 per year? So just something for your consideration as you think about all these things and equity.
And I'd just like to add, Commissioner Alom, I talked with one of the folks from Cook County, Illinois, last night, and I think I was coherent. And we talked about the guaranteed income and what people had, what they had to do so that people didn't lose their benefit. And they really had to have somebody really figure out and guarantee that people wasn't gonna lose their benefits that they already had by giving them the guaranteed income. So it gets a little bit complicated, you know? Thanks, Ms. Pierce.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on a few things. One is, when will we, do you think we're gonna get the comp study for Durham County? Do we know when that will be completed?
We have some preliminary findings.
We have preliminary findings, and we're meeting with department directors with those findings next week. And after those conversations, there'll be some review and additional draft, and then it should be ready.
Okay, great. So definitely for, in time for our discussions around this issue for this budget. Okay, great. Yeah, I just, you know, talking about the broader context, we haven't even talked about the bond. I mean, we also have, you know, approved the largest bond in the history of Durham, and we hopefully won't have to do a 2.5 cent tax increase, but we will have a tax increase just for the bond. So we really have to, these issues are complicated, they are not simple. And again, I just feel like our job is to always keep in mind, obviously, our employees are top of mind, that's, and the schools, that's why 70%, 75% of our public funds are going for that purpose. And I do think it's very important that we are making sure, we are setting an example for equity and having, you know, our employees and Durham Public Schools employees having a living, sustainable wage. But we're talking about 10,000 people. We have 300, about, this is another topic, is the census data, but 340,000 people in Durham County, and our funds come from, you know, a lot of people in our community. This is public dollars. So we also have to be making decisions that benefit everyone in our community. And as, you know, the more and more money that gets absorbed by just our own staff, the less we have for programs and services to benefit our community. That is the conundrum that we're in. That is the conundrum that we have. So these are not easy decisions to make, and for me personally, that's what I'm thinking about, is yes, I wanna do the best for our staff and DPS staff. We need to set an example for other employers as well, but we also have to take care of everyone else in our community, too. You know, this, our, the money, the revenues that we get are not just for the benefit of us, of our staff and DPS staff, they need to benefit everyone as well. So that is the dance that we have, and these are not easy decisions to make. So those are the things that go through my mind, and I'm glad that we are going to move forward with, I mean, I think everyone has consensus here about 1840 and doing whatever we, we know we're gonna need to put a lot of money into this issue. I also hope we'll have a conversation with our other employers. Duke University is the largest employer in the state and in Durham County, over 40,000 employees. We had data that you all gave us on the biggest employers. I'm really curious to know what their, is 1840 the bottom line for Duke? I don't know. So, you know, we can also have a really large impact on our community if we can advocate with the employers that we are in relationships with. And even looking at our incentives policy now, do we need to go back and revise that policy? I, you know, because I think right now we're saying it's 15, so that, I assume we would need to look at that. But looking at that list of top employers, the top 10, IBM and Duke, and then Durham Public Schools is the third. So, yeah, so I think there's a lot that we can also do beyond just us and the schools.
I think we're good. Did you all have any other slides?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you all so much, and thanks so much to the board.
I'd like to know, where are our policies? I've never seen like a booklet of county policies. I've seen ordinances, you know, online, and I've looked for policies, honestly, and have had trouble finding even ordinances, but I have found ordinances. I didn't know we had that policy. I think it's fantastic that we do, and I wanted to say also, I really support having a policy include a benchmark against a standard that we follow, you know, so that we don't sort of fall behind. And you all have done that. You've put this standard in as the 7.5% above the poverty level. I mean, one thing we might wanna think about if we ever review our policies is, would a standard involving a more widespread cost of living make more sense at the MIT calculator for the living wage or something? I don't know. But anyway, I was glad to hear that we actually have that policy, and it made me wonder what other policies do we have, and where are they?
Kathy? Our policies are on our intranet site, MyDeco, and those are our HR policies. You would go to the HR link. Our, um, policies are on our intranet site, MyDeco, and now those are our HR policies. You would go to the HR, uh, link. But then there are IT policies and different policies in different departments, so you just click on those departments and check policies.
So we can get a link.
Policy than a county policy?
We'll get links.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I think it's good that we have a.
And we did look at the MIT as well.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Anything else? Commissioner Alom, are you good?
No questions for me right now.
Alrighty, great, great, great. Thanks. So we'll move on then to, or did you have anything else to add, Keith, before we move to the homeowners relief? Good, alrighty. You're just walking. Alrighty. Yes, sir. What are you doing today? Okay, so we'll turn it over to Dwayne Brinson and his team, um, to discuss our homeowners relief fund program. Good morning.
Morning Commissioners. We have a presentation on the low-income homeowner relief program. You might remember.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you for saying low, because our agenda says long. And I was like, I don't think it's long. It's low.
Low income, that's right.
Yes.
And it was long-term homeowner at one point.
We, we.
Um, and it's evolved.
It's evolved.
When we started out, it was, we were trying to target, um, homeowners that had lived in Durham County at least ten years.
Okay.
And we, um, developed a series of efforts and initiatives in that strategy, and it's evolved, so.
Thank you for that explanation.
That's right. You might remember, uh, one of my first tasks when I came to Durham County was on affordable housing and tax relief and how to, uh, protect our most vulnerable. And we tried a few different iterations of this program. Um, hit a number of roadblocks. The general statutes, as you know, the general statutes doesn't allow local governments a lot of authority around this subject, but we found, um, found this way to do it through DSS and the DSS Board. And the presentation today is just a, a review of where that's been, uh, where it is now, and some recommendations on how to move that forward as well. So I'm gonna turn it over to the DSS staff. Uh, Ms. Janine Gordon has put together this presentation for the board, and I'll allow her to introduce herself and her colleagues.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us this morning. Uh, I appreciate this opportunity to talk about this program that you and, uh, the Tax Office have allowed us to partner, uh, along with. And, uh, I'd also like to have our interim director introduce herself.
Good morning. It's good to be here with you. I'm Sarah Bradshaw. I'm, I know all of you, so. Um, the rest of the really might not know. I'm the interim DSS Director since officially last November. Uh, happy to be supporting Durham DSS. Wonderful, wonderful things happening. Lot of, lot of challenges and, but a lot of opportunities. Wonderful staff here, Kelly, Kelly Enman and COO, and Janine specifically for the Asian Adult Services. Others like Catherine Williamson Hardy here, the Deputy Director, and, and others on the leadership team are just awesome leaders. Lot of things going on, lot of things that need to go on, and, and, and yes, Dr. Soell, anytime we show our faces, we're talking about low-income probably needs. And really, that is why I'm still in the, this business, I guess, and, and have returned after retiring for, uh, after thirty-two years in Sampson County DSS. So happy to be here and working with the board. And Janine's going to, um, run this show. Sorry, I'm not being, Janine is gonna run this show, but we are here to support and also provide any information if, if you wish to have us chime in and, and answer any questions. Thank you.
Maybe.
Oh, tilt your head to the left as you. I love it, Janine. There we go.
There we are.
Alright.
Um, so here's an overview of our low-income homeowner relief program and the purpose of this program. And if you remember back in FY twenty-two, uh, this program was initially for those homeowners who had been in their home for ten years. And a priority for those who had, um, an AMI of thirty percent or less. However, through, um, the course of that program, which started in October, through January of, um, from twenty, uh, October of twenty twenty-one to, uh, January of twenty twenty-two, uh, we met with the DSS Board, and the DSS Board agreed that we would open up from just thirty percent to up to eighty percent and that, um, we would look at how those numbers played out for future recommendations. So in FY, uh, twenty-three, we actually have, um, changed the way we look at eligibility, uh, including that we reduce the number of years that you would be in your home to five years, and that we had a staggered, uh, eligibility criteria based on your income at thirty percent, sixty percent, and eighty percent. So if you also recall, this is a NACO award-winning program. We actually won two NACO awards for this program in twenty twenty-two. So I wanted to put our program, uh, in context of what has been happening with tax, uh, assistance for low-income housing over the course of several years. Most importantly, if you look at the, uh, amount of credit or low-income housing credit between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, that, uh, year is kind of a, a little cliff there. And at that point in time, in, in twenty twenty, uh, we had COVID relief dollars come into play uh, to the tune of two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars for North Carolina. Uh, and that's under the Housing Assistance Fund. And so far, as of the date that I pulled this, on February twenty-second, North Carolina had already used approximately ninety-eight million dollars of the two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand. Um, at the bottom, you can kind of see where those housing assistance dollars went and how many of those dollars, uh, went towards each category. The reason why I'm pointing this out is because, um, while our program started, um, there were also assistance dollars coming in from the federal government via, via COVID, uh, funds uh, to also assist low-income homeowners. This is a kind of a, um, a focus on Durham County itself. You can see that, um, for the low-income Housing Assistance Fund from the federal government, uh, Durham County has already received a, a little over three-point-four million dollars, um, which is considerable amount, uh, given that we are also offering a tax assistance program through the Homeowner Relief Program. So I, I'm just trying to put this kind of in a broader context to see that there are other programs helping our residents, and we are still helping hundreds. Are, are the federal, um, assistance dollars also for homeowners, not for? They are for, specifically for homeowners. And they also have the cliff, right? So twenty twenty-six, the dollars all have to be used. Uh, and then North Carolina has to, um, you know, basically return the funds, any, any funds that have not been used, of course. Go back, just like any, um, funds that are COVID funds. So here's a look at what our program has done in FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three. So these are the number of applications that we have received and the number of applications that were approved and funds that have been, um, paid for. Funds, funds that have been, um, sent into our community and residents have received. In our first year, our inaugural year, keep in mind that we were only open for just a handful of months. We actually dispersed a hundred and forty-two thousand nine-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. So that's approximately seven-hundred-and-fifteen dollars per applicant that was approved. Now, in FY twenty-three, we did receive four-hundred-and-thirty-five, uh, completed applications. And so far, keeping in mind that this program just ended the thirty-first of January. So all of these, um, numbers that I'm pulling together came from the twenty-second of February. So so far, we had three-hundred-and-twenty-eight applicants, uh, be approved for funds. And those funds came to a total of three-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars, but there are still pending applicants out there as applicants do have the ability to continue to provide documentation until program closeout. So I just want to, um, put a caveat out there that some of the information you're gonna receiving is incomplete. Uh, but this is the data that we have to provide to you today. So we found that it was important to really look at this program and really analyze what were our strengths, what are our most, uh, important, uh, opportunities, but also what are the threats to our program? And, you know, one of the biggest threats that we see is foreclosure and gentrification. Um, and obviously, you know, there, there are, um, benefits to having, um, high property values come into the area. Um, those come with high property taxes, and that benefits our tax revenue. I, I, I understand that. Um, but at the same time, people who have been in their home and homes that have been here for a long period of time, that also raises their taxes as well. So that is one of the threats that we face, but at the same time, that is also uh, why we see that it's so important for this particular program to have, and we appreciate this opportunity to serve our community. So, again, looking at the eligibility criteria that we had for FY twenty-three, we had modified things so that it was five years and that we were taking incomes that were greater or, or less than or equal to eighty percent of AMI. If you're curious about what AMI is, we, we can provide that information to you. Um, otherwise, it, it does relate to our HUD dollars or HUD assistance. So I believe you have seen this slide before. This was provided by Kelly in a previous, uh, in a previous presentation.
Actually, we shared this with our DSS Board, um, just a couple of weeks ago as part of our budget presentation. So I just wanted to review it quickly here. Um, so you'll recall that our budget for twenty-three um, was seven-hundred-and-fifty was contributed by the county and five-hundred thousand by the city. We have an ILA with the city for this. And so as Janine mentioned, we're right now at approximate spending of three-hundred-and-two thousand with probably about twenty to twenty-five applications still in that pending and finalization process. So if we had to estimate, we'd say we probably will be about three-thirty, uh, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand for the year. And then you see the split between county and city dollars. So, um, also as part of this program, we were able to get three positions that support the tax program and other crisis-based programs in Janine's area. So we would want to maintain that admin support in the program. But what we presented to our DSS Board was, um, a consideration about how we might right-size the program, still giving it room for growth in the twenty-four budget, but also potentially reducing those budgeted dollars. So, um, we were considering if we basically cut everything in half. So if it was a three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollar county budget, a two-fifty city budget, keeping the admin positions as they are with any growth that will come out of class and comp, um, that that might be a way to continue the program, um, but right-size it within our budget and allow for growth next year.
So part of this program includes program outreach. And, um, the first thing that we do each year is we include a flyer about our program in tax bills. So that really goes out to everyone who has a tax bill. Um, this year, we've done television interviews. We've done radio interviews. Um, we use our traditional methods, uh, for getting the information out. Social media, we've worked with our religious organizations. We've done, um, community organization outreach as well as community advocates. Um, one of our recommendations you'll see is that we can, we, we'd like to consider perhaps looking at a specific area in Durham that this, uh, program could likely benefit the most in that area. So one of the things we just wanted to, um, include is how this program is changing lives. Um, we do follow up with our clients who receive this assistance to, um, determine how this, you know, how this assistance, um, really has impacted their lives and impacted their ability to retain their home. Um, and more importantly, um, did it make the difference for them? And what we really have found is that, you know, in, in many instances, it has. And we know with the rate of inflation and the costs of things going up from food to gasoline to energy to essential items, you know, all of things going up, receiving assistance to stay in your home can be critical. And, um, we also know from, uh, our, excuse me, our North Carolina Justice Center that families that stay housed, uh, have positive health, education, and economic outcomes, including the ability to have, um, build wealth and oftentimes generational wealth. So this is an, an important program that our community, uh, relies on. And of course, we want to point out that we are one of the counties leading the way. Um, we have counties reaching out to us to find out things like how are we funded, how are we staffed, when do we open, what is our criteria, and, um, we've been in the news. So, um, I just wanted to share those as well. Um, and we also want to keep up with our lessons learned so that we're constantly evolving and making sure that we're meeting the need um, each year and making sure that we are relying on our community partners, our advocates, and our clients, uh, to give feedback so that we know what we're doing well, what we need to keep, and what we need to change. So, um, as you'll see, these are the proposed recommendations at this point by DSS staff. Since we have not had a chance to vet with our DSS Board or with our community partners, um, we would recommend continuing the dates from August first through the thirty-first, um, continuing having the staggered amounts of money. Um, however, we do agree that, um, perhaps a reduction of half, uh, of the total budget would be of benefit and, uh, positive, uh, posi- possibly, excuse me, um, you know, narrowing in on a particular neighborhood, um, for our outreach efforts. Thank you.
Great, great, great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, questions?
Uh, thank you, Janine and Kelly and Sarah and the whole, uh, DSS team for making this such a successful program in our community, for leading the way across the state, as you were saying, as helping us figure out how to, um, help folks build wealth, continue to build wealth, low-income folks, many of whom are people of color. And we know there's a very unfair wealth gap in this nation, so we do see this as a program that's trying to help address that inequity. Um, and really appreciate the way in which you've laid out, um, the numbers, helping us understand how much money has, we've been able to distribute and, and your suggestion that we perhaps consider reducing the overall funding. I'm, I'm open to, to doing that. Um, however, I would think, um, that maybe we'd want to keep the funding. However, I would think that maybe we'd want to keep the funding level where it is and just maybe even spend a little more on outreach. I mean, I don't know whether that's a possibility or not, but unless we don't think there are low-income homeowners who've been in their homes five years or more that would qualify, that we could help, still, I hesitate to, I wouldn't suggest increasing it, but I just hesitate to decrease it. I'd like to keep the amount there. I fear that if we decrease it, we may never increase it again. So I really like to hold that money in the kitty for this program and maybe consider spending some of it on additional outreach. Maybe we want to try Reddit. Keith's laughing since I joke. But yeah, those are just my initial thoughts. I don't really have any questions. I am glad you said you need to hold on to your administration dollars because I do fear with all the federal dollars we've had coming in throughout the county, but DSS in particular, we've really relied on you all for, you know, help with getting the rental assistance dollars out, getting these housing dollars out. So I hear you on that. And, you know, Hope County would say to us, we actually can't do this without more people, but let's definitely hold on to the ones we have. I'm glad you said that. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
So your question regarding the length, you know, we started this in the middle of COVID, and you guys were extraordinary in getting this up and going. So my question would be, are we going to continue it and increase it? Or as Commissioner Carter, are we just going to keep it where it is? What do you see that's happening going forward?
I may, perhaps I need a little bit of clarity about how you see it, keeping it the same?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what's the amount of people that are requesting the help and where we stand as far as continuing it or increasing it? Because when we started, it was in the middle of COVID.
Yes, ma'am.
So what's going to be the, what are we going, where are we going with it at this point? I guess that's my question.
So I think that's what we were looking to do. Since we started, you know, your inaugural year was $174,000. We're looking about $330,000 this year, about keeping our budget in order to maybe grow the program through outreach to $500,000, $525,000. So we would still have that contained within those dollars. But knowing and, you know, hearing Keith and talking about a tight budget year, just did want to consider, no, I understand. Well, and DSS has many other uses. We'd be happy to keep it in our budget and use it until it, you know.
Can I make one contextual note as well? When we started this originally, we had planned to spend as much as $3 million.
Right.
And what we told the board was that we would budget close to a million and we would come back if we needed more. And so we've watched the patterns and adjusted the budget in the normal budget process. So I would offer that during our normal review process over the next couple of months that we come back with a recommendation. But we've been sort of recalibrating as we've seen the patterns. And as Kelly said, with the number of staff, whether people are eligible or not, they're going to call. And so that requires staff time. That's the same with the staff for the tax department because we increased the number of staff to support that. So when you see that big chart and it says dollars for salaries and benefits, those are the services being done. And we can't service our families, our residents, if we don't have the people to do it. And so we've had to staff up so that we could be responsive and they could get a call back timely or the technology investments as well. And so the path that DSS has recommended makes a lot of sense as far as strategy, and it continues. But I am sure the manager would desire for us to come back with a more definitive answer once we do a little bit more analytics. But I wanted to remind the board, because y'all were here, you remember, and we even had talked about setting aside some of our ARPA money to support it. But the patterns have not elevated to that point that we needed to do it.
Mr. Burns?
Hey, y'all. Okay, so a couple of things, and I'll be quick. One, to Dwayne, to Janine, Joanne, to Lo Siler, to Ben Rose, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. There are senior citizens in Durham right now who are in their homes because of this program, period. They are not homeless because of this program, period. So I need, I see the articles written. I know we're, I've seen people who've gotten the checks. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't want this program to go anywhere, and that decision is up to the folks sitting here. I will say, I want to, again, add a little bit of context because I get it. When we first did it, we said you had to be here 10 years. You all went back, recalibrated, said, okay, well, seven and a half or five. I personally think I want to keep the money at the same rate for a couple of reasons. We've been in COVID, and we have not been able to go out and perhaps do the outreach we needed to do. So I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Carter. I am so happy that somebody has done the research and has figured out, maybe we need to go into this neighborhood. So whatever neighborhood y'all think that is, because I do know that you all got some questions and we got some emails about it, and let's beat the pavement. If you want, Commissioner Burns will go with you too. We can knock on doors together. So I don't have no problem with that. This kind of delinquent tax system that North Carolina has, where you can't use tax dollars to pay somebody else, and then y'all got creative to work with Dwayne and work with Joanne so that we could do it, I think has been huge for this community. But I think the biggest reason why I really want this money to stay, and I want to be very careful with how I say this, we don't know if the city's going to raise taxes. We don't know by how much. We don't know what this board is going to do. Because again, we're talking about class and compensation. I know a lot of us are in that space. Now we got excess costs with Durham Public Schools, just for, not their building, but all the buildings, like capital costs. So there's going to be a rub somewhere. I want to make sure that people who have lived in Durham, especially our seniors, can stay in place, whether it's COVID or not. Every time we raise taxes, we put pressure on them. A lot of the people who are coming in here, making long-drawn-out speeches, currently do not have property taxes. The people that we, and that's not saying that they're, in no way does that say that what they say doesn't matter, doesn't value, but this six cents, seven cents, eight cents, whatever they're going to get hit with. And then in 2025, we do reappraisals. That appraisal is going to come down like a hammer, a hammer on a 70-year-old senior who is in their home and does not have another income coming in. What did we discuss yesterday? Food stamps ran out yesterday, yesterday, and now we're, so no, I don't want this program to go anywhere. I hope that we have the votes to keep it. And I hope that we can go out and do the additional outreach and we can expend those dollars. I think that really has been one of the things that's hindered us a little bit. And so if you need us to come with you, you need us to send it out, by all means. But I really, I saw the article in the Indy and how many senior citizens were in literal tears because if we had not sent them this $1,000, they would be homeless and have absolutely nowhere to go. Appreciate all of y'all.
So I, first of all, I want to echo what Commissioner Burns did in recognizing the collaboration here. I think this is another great example with our tax department and our DSS department working together on this very innovative program, which is not a mandated service for DSS. This is an extra thing that our already overworked staff is taking on. And I do want to recognize you, Dwayne, for, because I'll never forget that phone call when you called me and were like, hey, I just found a great solution. Mecklenburg County is doing this. We can do this. So, and I appreciate the way you're using the data to help guide decision-making. I'm going to be having a different perspective here about what we allocate for the budget for this. I think what you're doing right now and coming to us and saying, hey, we don't need to tie up a half a million dollars or, no, what, $750,000 worth of county funding in a program that's not being spent. That's where we see that big fund balance, the general fund balance. The growth in our general fund balance is from money sitting in departments that is not being spent. So this is, you are setting an example for what the county managers asked you to do. The county manager asked everybody, go back and look and see where you're not spending money, and that money can be freed up to spend on other needs that we have, like increasing the salaries. So I actually think that this is showing, this is good management, effective, efficient government to say, we don't need this money sitting here and not being used, and then we have to go raise taxes on our residents to meet some need. Because if you all, if we're really lucky and we get more applications, then you can come back to us and say, hey, we need to add more funding to this program. And this board will say absolutely yes. So I would say, let's go with our staff recommendation on this, which actually first needs to go through the DSS board, who will make a recommendation to this board about the funding. But, and I do agree, we need to try to improve engagement. Every year, it's gotten better. I want to recognize the partnership we have with the community because people in the community have been partners in getting the word out. And we, I think that's the way we have to really build on this, is using organizations and networks in the community. You know, our churches, the Durham Center for Senior Life. I totally agree with Commissioner Burns. This is about keeping seniors in their home and helping our seniors age in place, protecting wealth. But our, our single black senior, female seniors are the, have a much higher percentage of homeownership than any single group in this county. And we need to keep these, our, these women in their homes and age in place. So anyway, so that's my spiel on it. I just want to understand, in your slide, you said to focus on the West Side. Did you mean the, what did you mean by West Side? Did you mean the West?
Sorry, West End.
West End. Oh, West End. Okay, okay, good, okay. Okay, well, thank you so much.
Commissioner Alom?
I will save a real time and say ditto, ditto, ditto to Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Carter's comments. I'm really excited that this program has been such a success. Thank you so much to all the staff and the DSS board for making this happen. It's beneficial not only to Durham residents, but as was mentioned, you know, counties across the state are following lead. So we're helping residents all across the state by setting this example. So thank you so much to everyone who made this possible. And I support us continuing the program as is.
Just reply, respond a little bit to Wendy's comment about not holding on to tax dollars that we're not spending and that built our fund balance. Couldn't agree more, except in this case, I just do not think we're, we have a massive fund balance and we're going to lay, you know, the major attribution for that at the foot of a program that's run by DSS and that's a program that allows us to actually take tax dollars from those who can afford to pay and give it to those who can't afford to pay. I'm afraid if we cut or reduce the amount of funding in this program to what we think is the right size based on the past couple of years, which have happened during COVID, that we will manage to that. You know, I want us to manage to the larger amount of money. I want us to strive for that larger amount of money rather than, okay, this is what we have, and we're going to try to get to this. No, let's get to this, you know? And I hear the point about they could come back to us. You could, but we, it won't always be us. It will be a different board, you know, in the future. And I just think that it's, it's a little treacherous, you know, to reduce funding for a program that we really had trouble getting the funding for in the first place. I want to hang on to it here. It's difficult to find ways to redistribute the wealth. This is one of those ways. I want to hold on to it.
It makes me a little uncomfortable, too. It's like, what we do is we manage to what we have. And if we cut it, it's hard to get it back because there's always going to be something else to take it. So it's, it's kind of like one in half a dozen is the other one. What does this board have an appetite for when we start to take away or leave the money there? So I think that's just something we need to, as I say, marinate on. Okay. Any other, attorney?
Ma'am Chair, I just wanted to, this is great, and this wonderful conversation. Just wanted to remind that this program needs to stay within DSS. I think y'all have been talked to, I wasn't here, but I suspect you had, you can't move this over to the tax department for, so just for new folks, there's some statutory considerations. So as long as you run it through DSS, you have authority and reign to do. Just wanted to mention that.
Great. This is great feedback. You know, as we said at the beginning of this, we move at the direction of the board. Our vision is to execute your vision. So this is good feedback. But I do want to applaud staff for doing the analysis and modeling the behavior that we all need to get to an approved budget. Thank you all so much.
Okay, Keith?
Well, I was going to speak, but apparently that's been shut down. Aspirational, I will say aspirational budgeting, budgeting in hopes of spending the money is an expensive choice. I hear you all, I hear some of you, and I-
A limited amount of money in which we're doing it, and it's in DSS.
We tie up any given year, multiple millions of dollars in a budget that isn't spent. I showed you on one of the slides, we're spending 92% of our operating budget or our general fund budget. That leaves millions of dollars on the table unspent, pulled out of a taxpayer's pocket, metaphorically, and sitting there doing nothing. And then-
Underestimating revenue, which is-
We are doing both of those. You are absolutely correct. So I'll just end with that. All I'm really going to say here is that we are playing, we have a break, we have some snacks in the innovation lab. We can carry on this conversation in private, and then we'll kick in with the last presentation. Thank you all.
I really like my flat shoes these days. I really like my flowers, though. I really like my flowers. I should, I should, I should sing with you, son. Oh, no, I can walk at them, I just- Oh, no, I can walk at them, I just... So, good morning, Mr. Bowens and Mr. Manns.
Having us, Madam Manager.
And you have to talk in that mic there.
Can you hear me? Oh.
Oh, that's better.
All right, let me...
What's that commercial? Can you hear me now?
Well, good morning, Madam Manager. Thanks for having us, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Happy to give you an update today with Mr. Manns on the Board of Elections, preparations for the upcoming election, and also things going forward with the shops at Hope Valley. So we have a bit of a narrative here. I know we have some new folks. If you're interested in exactly what the Board of Elections does, I know that all the Commissioners here have a pretty extensive knowledge of the work that we do. So essentially, the Board of Elections is responsible under North Carolina law for conducting elections, all elections within Durham County's jurisdiction or geographic boundaries. We have five municipalities that we manage, and then, of course, the county in general. We're the fifth largest elections jurisdiction in the state of North Carolina with approximately 230,000 registered voters, and growing. We offer, I would say, in comparison to other counties of similar size, a lot more election services than most, which we're very proud to do. So the Board is aware, this Board is aware of our long history of requests, starting back in 2017, with respect to space concerns of the Board of Elections. Right now, we're at 201 North Rock Spurrow Street, As you know, in 2020, we were split across our main facility, also that new warehouse location. And I want to thank Claudia for her work, or excuse me, Deputy County Manager Hager. Let me get my manners correct at this table.
Claudia is fine.
I want to. She says it's fine, but it's not. She's the Deputy County Manager. So, 2020, of course, we were spread across multiple buildings over in Admin 2, that new warehouse location that was leased on our behalf, and then the main library, the main location at 201 North Rockspurrow. The Board is aware through a chronology events and various documents, a space request letter submitted to you all on March 13, 2021, outlaying our concerns following the 2020 general election. Some of you came on facility visits, which we appreciate and were able to discuss with you the concerns. And we appreciate your responsiveness based on the actions that you've taken to consolidate our offices. This is not an anomaly in North Carolina. We're seeing this happen. Wake County, for instance, moved into a 76,000 square foot facility. We're seeing this in places like Buncombe, New Hanover County, even smaller counties such as Alamance. So, we're looking forward to this move. We think it'll enhance our services to the community, put early voting back at the Board of Elections and not at a, in lieu of site. So, very, very excited and we are grateful that you will not change your mind. In regards to the 2023 election schedule, we have two scheduled election events this year. The October primary election and the November general election, of course. The October primary election is specific to the city of Durham. They employ a nonpartisan primary plurality method of voting. So, there is a primary and then a subsequent November general election. Candidate filing for the 2024 primary will be December 4 through the 15th, which will be, if you all opt for reelection, that'll be your filing period. 2024 is the big one and that's, our hope is to be in this new location by 2024 because we expect historical turnout. We expect a lot of pressure on Durham County as is always the case in presidential years. So, we find it critical that we are in that location. We know we have a tight timeline, which Mr., I think Mr. Manns will speak to. But we're very excited. A lot of work going on this year. We're already starting significant work and planning for 2023 and happy to take any questions on the election schedule or the Board of Elections operations in general.
All right, so moving on in the presentation, again, as Derek mentioned and was in the last slide, the overall site is basically just over 17 acres, 17.34 acres. There is basically 26 units inside the shops at Hope Valley Shopping Center itself. One being the Kroger box, which is what the Board of Elections will ultimately house. The other remaining spaces are leased out to just various tenants. We can certainly provide you a list later if some of you all haven't seen that. The project goes, and so when we think about the project, we always separate it out into the, we call it the Board of Elections, but you also hear us refer to the Kroger box. And so, obviously, we want to renovate the shell, the Kroger box itself. In the earlier slides, it was roughly 54,000 square feet. The grocer is basically just what it is. It's a grocery store. It's basically just a shell. It's concrete flooring. You have a lot of plumbing, mechanical, electrical, either in the slab or in the ceiling. It's just an empty space, so to speak. And so, that, quite honestly, that's why it really worked well for Board of Elections operations in being able to potentially upfit the space relatively quickly. We often see that old grocery stores often get repurposed for governmental uses and that's one of the reasons why. Derek mentioned that the newly renovated space will consolidate Board of Elections operation into a single facility. That's going to bode well for us. The scope of work includes the interior renovation of the actual Kroger box, the exterior facade improvements, some roofing and full building systems replacement. So, that's really for the Kroger box itself. A second project is going to be just simply to replace the roof and rooftop HVAC units on the remainder of the shopping center. And just as a reminder, Commissioners, we just approved the actual design contract with R&amp;D on Monday night to allow us to proceed into the, to the design and really start to get moving on this project. So, in terms of a breakdown of a phasing, we have it up here. Obviously, we call it Phase 1A. Is the Kroger box itself that I just mentioned. I know Commissioner Carter, you asked that during the work session about implementation of sustainable initiatives and things like that. And I told you at that time that, yes, we will be doing a photovoltaic study for the building to determine to what extent of photovoltaic panels we could put on the building as well as other sustainable initiative, i.e. potential rainwater capture system, low-flow water closets and just things like that. So, there'd be a myriad of things that we could potentially put in this building. We'll be coming back with more discussion on that once we get further into design. The exterior improvements to the building and the building facade, now I want to be clear, we're separating this out, not to get hung up in any regulatory approvals necessary for that work in light of the fact that Board of Elections wants to get in the building as quickly as possible. And then, again, the Phase 2 breakdown is what I mentioned with the roof and rooftop HVAC units for the balance of the shopping center. So, in terms of a schedule, this is a quick and dirty schedule. I thought it was important to put this up here because this project is going to be very aggressive. Again, we just approved the design contract on Monday. We'll be quickly coming to you all with a contract with the construction manager at risk. First step, obviously, is going to be doing what we call our pre-construction services. We're going to get them on board. They're going to help us with constructability reviews to determine means and methods and just what sort of makes sense to be cost efficient with what we're putting into the building. They'll help us hone in on the schedule, some estimating, some value analysis, things like that. And then, we'll quickly be coming to you, it says in May, around that time with a furniture purchase. Obviously, you know, with shattered supply chain issues, we're having to procure furnishing, furnishing and things like that earlier than normal, just to meet the deadlines or the timelines that they're putting on us with sort of manufacturing and getting that equipment delivered. And so, that's just one. Those are two contracts that will be coming to you quickly. That's the C-MAR pre-construction as well as the furniture contract. And so, the Phase 1A that we mentioned, the construction, we're trying to start that in July. And so, that's going to put us July through December with the interior renovation of the Kroger box. Some of these subsequent things that are listed on this schedule just sort of is a further breakdown of the second phase or Phase 1B, which is the site improvements and the facade improvements to the Kroger box. And then, the Phase 2 being the rooftop and rooftop replacement. We are in the process of closing on the shops at Hope Valley Shopping Center. We expect to have that, based on my last update or discussion with Nancy Mitchell from our real estate office, mid-March. And so, that's going to allow us to, again, we'll be the full outright owner of the building, allow us to get in and do some of these preliminary things that need to be done to expedite this whole process. Again, in light of the fact that we just approved this contract Monday night, we're kind of at the blocking phase, the schematic conceptual design phase is the term, but it's really just block diagrams kind of showing the administrative areas, the warehousing areas, the voting operation, volunteer training, boardroom, just some of those little ancillary things that are required for Board of Elections operations and consolidation of both the warehousing operations and administrative functions. That really completes the presentation as an update and so we'll take questions at this time.
Thank you both for your presentation. You know, we're excited about this. Just have one question about the building. The question that I've been hit with quite a bit is, will the Board Election use the entire building?
The answer to that question, Commissioner, is no. Again, we remind you that we have 25 other units outside of the Kroger box. And so, right now, there are just a myriad, there's the DMV office there. There are just a myriad of tenants that are actually in those space and some of those have leases that go from three to five years out. And so, what we wanted to do was we wanted to table conversations around the broader or the overall use of the balance of the shopping center at our upcoming CIP discussions. I think that would give us more time to really take a deep dive and try to get an understanding from the Board of what you all would like to see with that so we can begin some process in terms of determining what we actually want to do with the shopping center itself, so.
No, I'm referring to the Kroger.
Oh, yes, Kroger, yes, absolutely. The whole entire 54,000 square feet of the Kroger box is going to be used by Board of Elections. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we're just looking for some space for the Boys and Girls Club and they like your space.
We're happy to help them find an alternative. But.
You're good at it, Derek.
Okay, yeah, we're, we helped to find this one. We're happy to do some research on their behalf.
Well, I told them that I would ask, so I have to be a woman of my word and do that. So, and I had already said to them that I was pretty sure that that whole space would be used for the Board of Election, but having you confirm it. Okay, questions from other Commissioners? Commissioner Jacobs?
Yes, I will note from the plan that a lot of it is storage. And we are, right now, some of us have had the joy of being out at the storage facility. So, this is, this is about consolidating all of your, all of your stuff in one place. So, I think people don't realize that it's not just about where you go to vote, but it's, you know, the storage of all of your, everything related to your operations being in one place. So, yeah, I just had a question about what will the process be around the former, when, once you move out around the former Board of Elections site? Is one question. And then, the funding that's going to be required, not just for the Board of Elections now, but for this whole 17.34 acres, which was not in our original, not in our adopted CIP, just how, what is going to be our strategy around managing the cost? Because we're taking on a lot more costs, not just to buy the property, but to renovate it and then we've got the ongoing maintenance. So, I guess you may not have the answer now, but I would like to, like during our budget process, have further discussion about, about that and then also the strategy around the other spaces that are available and, you know, what are the opportunities around that? You know, what, what you all, your thoughts are. Because I know, I just sent you an email last night, Perry, about somebody who's interested in, you know, renting some of the other space. So, I'm not saying you have to answer those things now, but those are just some of the things that I am thinking about. And I just want to lift up this, what, you know, Derek, your leadership on this, your innovation and outside-the-box thinking for this solution to the needs for the Board of Elections. Because I'm really proud of this, you know, using the Kroger site specifically as an example of, you know, environmental sustainability, reusing something, economic revitalization, going into a strip mall that where a building has been sitting empty for a long time. And also, and modeling this for the larger community. And also, this is putting it, putting a service in the community where there's also a bus stop. So, it's accessible to a lot of people. So, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this.
Commissioner, General Services has looked at the maintenance requirements for this facility. We have put it in our budget as a request, P1 request with regards to the maintenance. It's roughly, roughly in the neighborhood of about $2.3 million.
And to answer your question about the repurposing the use of where elections would be leaving, that's something that we've already had a conversation with our executive leadership team about space utilization. So, we're going to have a very comprehensive discussion about that. We don't want decisions to be made in a silo. So, we're going to look, look at that as a leadership team. Looks like Commissioner Byrne said something?
There is a placeholder in the CIP of $31 million for the Board of Elections project. If you may recall, about a year ago, they gave us a couple of options, one that was lower and one that was higher. Because of the market, we are where we are. And so, we will refine that number along with others, other projects in upcoming months.
That is helpful. So, Commissioner Jacobs did get two of my comments. I did. He said it facetiously, but I, I don't know, when Derek came to us, I'm not saying everybody doesn't advocate for their staff or does not advocate for what they need. Everybody does. But Derek did it in a certain way. He says, "Well, this is what I need." And then he came back, "Well, this is why I need it." Well, I'm going to go back and I'm going to find it myself. Like, he actually went out, found property, found multiple pieces of property, would see you in the hallway, email you, call you, and brought us like multiple options. And I don't think in a million years we could have made, well, let me not say, I'll say, I don't, I don't think that we could have imagined that we would have gotten lucky enough to get a space that was that close to a high school, that close to a school we were sitting up, that close to a neighborhood that, you know, really wants us to, to build a better footprint on that side of Durham, outside of downtown. So, along with like the economic development component and the revitalization and how we can, and how we can go back and reuse spaces, I'm just thankful that, you know, you were forward-thinking. I do, I did see the timeline. My big question at the end of this is going to be, you know, I know you said it's going to be fast and dirty and I do feel like we can do it. You know, y'all can do anything. But what is the contingency plan in the event that we cannot? Because we do still have this building and I recognize as soon as I saw, like I knew, you know, we're going to use that whole building, that storage, because we have very sensitive machines that, quite frankly, another party tries to come over here every six months and tries to take. So, I want to make sure that they're in the safest, most secure place. I'm happy we got that number from Mo because I know just to keep that safe is going, is going to take some. So, in the event that we don't do it, what's the contingency plan? And also, before you even answer that, you know, we are getting inquiries from the community, not about Kroger, but about the 26 other spaces. And I know that we are a long way from that conversation about what we want to do. You know, we threw out many ideas because, you know, this is a really, this is a really industrious board. That's what I will say. But until we can do those more industrious things, I hope that we as a board, as a staff and as a community can model setting these spaces up, and this is just me saying this, as a space where business owners or community owners or nonprofit leaders can come and have access to affordable retail space. So, I don't know what are we going to do. I do know that there's a lot in there. You all gave us the list. DMV, there's a beauty salon, there's a restaurant, and they have long-term leases. But as some of these spaces, I think four or five of them are empty right now. I do hope that that's something that we can model and nobody has to answer that now and get themselves in trouble. But, but I know that, you know, we just got DDI's report from Nicole and 97% of the space downtown is taken. And we have this advent of entrepreneurs that are bursting at the seams. I'm sure we got Tammy Hall in here today. I knew she can tell you how many companies she's certified at the Hub Office in Durham and entrepreneurs are looking for space. So, I do hope that we can think about them. But again, what's the contingency plan? If I don't know, we don't have no steel in America in the next three months. Like, what's the plan?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. That's a great question. So, of course, we, we still have 201 North Rockspurrow. So, of course, we, we still have 201 North Roxboro, obviously, and we also still can have our contract with Aspire Properties for the South Austin location. So, in the event we can't meet the December deadline, we can maintain in the current kind of bifurcated system through the primary of March. So, we'd still be in, not, not preferred operations, but we'd be in standing to continue as we have, and relatively in a secure setting.
All eyes are on you for the presidential, so.
Bring 'em on.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes, I concur with my colleagues and their statements of praise for this project and leadership from our team, and from you in particular, Derek, and the board, the Board of Elections. I couldn't help but think about this new and consolidated front for our Board of Elections when I was driving down Fernway Street the other day. Do you all remember when the Board of Elections was there? That little teeny hole in a wall? It's just hard to believe. I mean, it will be, it will be a proud day for us all when we have a Board of Elections that can, can shoulder the, the weight of the importance of the service that, that you're providing, and this really will do that, so it's gonna be great. One question, just that I'm interested in, is Roxboro Road Street, is it ever gonna go beyond, you know how that dead ends there, sort of beside the Kroger? And I had always heard it was gonna cut through eventually. Does anybody else know what I'm talking about? Okay.
Commissioners, I don't know if anybody from the county can answer that.
Okay.
I think that's either the city or NC DOT.
Uh-huh.
But that's something that we could certainly investigate for.
I'm just curious, as much as anything. I thought, you, I think y'all know everything, so I figured you'd know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from you, Commissioner Alom?
Thank you so much, Derek, for being so forward-thinking. I'm, I'm excited to see how we continue with those things.
And please extend our thanks and our appreciation to your board, because I don't know if you gave them a task, or they just took on the task of going out finding a building. And they did a great job, and when, once they found it, they made sure we knew that that was the building that they wanted, and...
I will definitely, our, our, our board chair is one that says, "Do this," and we do. Y'all are familiar with Dawn Baxter, so that was the charge, and, and we moved forward. So, they were instrumental, obviously, in, in kinda prompting.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. If there are no other questions, thank you so much. All right. Thanks. Well, guess what? Moving. Yes, yes, yes.
What, what else? What else you got?
That's the end of the official, the formal presentations we have, so...
Oh, my goodness gracious. We moving.
Of board discussion now.
All right.
And so, we'll see, we're at 11:20, so we were scheduled to end at 12, but we'll check in at 12 to see where we are, and if, if we need to extend time, we'll just ask the board for permission to do that. So, before, one, I wanna make sure, we did get to each of our commissioners a copy of the board policy submissions that you all had provided to us.
Mm-hmm.
So, I do want to allow time for each of you to speak from those perspectives. But before we go there, Keith, is there anything that you feel like you needed from us today to get some kind of consensus on, to move forward, that we haven't gotten?
No, ma'am. I just put up a slide that I think I just wanna remind the commissioners. Just strategic application of resources to meet current, ongoing, and new needs, while also maintaining long-term operational resiliency. Covered a lot of ground over the last two days, and there are a lot of needs, obviously. Last thing I'll say, I'll remind you, we have on the books right now, $60 million in additional funding requests for upcoming year, and only $28 million, and that's a relative only, only $28 million in new revenue without a tax rate increase. So, we've got to do something to get those numbers to zero, equal, or equal expenditure, new expenditures to equal new revenue. That's my sad reminder.
Wah, wah, wah. What a downer. That's just such a great, he doesn't make this fun.
Is Keith saying that he wants us to suggest more ways to spend money?
That's what I heard, Commissioner Alom. I think he's, he's saying, if, if we go, if we're gonna spend more money, we just gotta be more efficient. Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. I would love to see attempts, and we've already talked about that, better efficiency of our services, reallocation of existing dollars is a wonderful way of moving money, existing dollars, around to support many of the things you all want to support. Remember the hula hoop girls from yesterday? We don't do everything well.
You know, the thing that, the thing that has been really, really great is, for the county and the city, when we do, when we partner and do things together, we're so able to do more. And I hope that those kinds of relationships will continue. You know, I'm thankful for the county, for staff, being able to push the Black Maternal Health, to be able to move that along. That was one of the things, that was my top one. Safe communities, I know that's a conversation that we're in right now. Assessment of affordable housing, we are looking at supporting more affordable housing. Expanding mental health, we are, we will be having a conversation at our work session about mental health, and, and also looking at funding, not just from the county, but from state and Duke. So, these partnerships are, I think, is so important, that we do these so that we can get more bang for our buck. Prenatal, pre-K and prenatal, those, that was my fifth one, and we are doing things around that as well. So, I, I think all the things that was on my list has been touched upon moving forward, and I can come up with another list. Oh, my goodness.
Is that what I can do? I can come with, I can come with, I can come with some more?
Keith, you didn't mention that, that if we are, you know, meeting the needs that they have put on the table, it doesn't mean that they come up with more needs. Okay?
Oh, he didn't tell we couldn't come up with no more.
Can, can I address, you mentioned affordable housing, and there is a discussion that we want to bring before the board. We're not quite ready yet, but do want to give you a preview of what it will be. So, we had given, I may have mentioned this quickly before, but we, we had been given four projects from the city for you all to consider funding with ARPA dollars. It appears now that some members of City Council have asked that the city appropriates another $10 million towards affordable housing projects. And so, it appears they may be able to fund the first two of those projects, as they were ranked. And so, now, I think the ask is that the, the commissioners now just look to fund those last two affordable projects. And then, there is also an opportunity for a permanent supportive housing project to come before you to be considered as well. So, wanted to make you aware of that. We'll bring that to the board very, very soon, but wanted you to know that the affordable housing piece, that it's moving, and we have some very good opportunities to consider. All right. Who wants to go next? Commissioner Burns?
I just wanna say to staff, thank you for giving me everything I asked for. It's clear that I'm the favorite. So, you're all aces in my book. No, for real, they did. So, a couple of things, mine, I wanna be quick, 'cause if you noticed, if you really noticed, you know, the majority of, of the board actually asked for the same three things. On maternal health, y'all gave us that yesterday, so thank you. Our three of us asked for housing, like, that's across this, it's five things, like, three folks asked for housing. So, the manager just hit on it, I didn't even have to, you know, 'cause we know that that's the issue. And we are in a position, based on what you stated yesterday about where we're at with broadband, we do have some wiggle room in our ARPA dollars. So, again, that, we're kinda sort of in a good place with what you all brought us. The third thing that you, the third thing that was brought up, that everybody agreed on to a certain extent, and the manager elevated, one of my priorities was the finalization and the broadening of these mapping projects, which doesn't seem like that's something that costs any money, but what I'm trying to do is figure out where we shouldn't be possibly expending money, so we can pay for other things. And the manager, and Wendy, brought that up today, like, if this is a space where we're consistently seeing that we can't draw it down, and we saw that in the first slide, we spent 92% of what we were gonna spend, and we got 107 of it back. So, again, you gave me everything I asked for, except for my Young Men of Color initiative. I am going to be unbearable in the budget, in the event. I know, look, Claudia already moved her mic. She said, she said, I'm ready, Commissioner Burns. So, you know, everything else, think about it, like, we got lucky, we did not do this together. We were in a silo. Brenda and I didn't talk about maternal health, and Neta didn't, this is just something that we care about, and y'all brought it to us. We didn't have to talk to each other about affordable housing, that was something that we wasn't, we do talk about that. And so, that, that's something we're working on, and I, I like the projects that the city's bringing forth, you know. It had a $90 million bond in her infinite wisdom, Wanda, manager Paige, and the mayor went out and got another $40 million. This board, before I was on here, put $20 million down. Now, in a position to do 10, I think it's gonna take those consistent investments, because the community, everybody talks about what's down on the novice, that's being built on Main Street. And I always have to tell the community, "Come up four blocks and look exactly what this board did, 200, 300, 500, East Main Street, so you can walk and chew gum at the same time. It, it just takes us a little bit longer." So, we're probably not gonna catch up, but I wanna consistently keep making these investments in affordable housing. As far as the Young Men of Color initiative, what I would like to see, and it's not gonna take us to expand a bunch of dollars, the same way the City Council can come up with a bunch of task force, and maybe I need to put that pressure on myself, because they did come up with their, their own ideas about what they wanted it to look like. I would love for us to have a task force and a committee, and I would love for us to give them anywhere from $100 to $250,000, so that they could manage and expend these funds on their own. That, to me, is a very small ask out of a billion-dollar budget, to set up a new board. That's it. And I know I, you know, nobody wants to hear this in the public. It's five women sitting up here. I can sit here and talk about women's issues all day. I can pontificate about a black man's issues all day. I don't walk in a black man's shoes. I don't. And I don't have the expectation that we have all the answers sitting on this board or sitting in this room. So, we need to create a table, 'cause one has not been created. And I don't think that that costs anybody in this room any money. I don't think that the taxpayers are gonna be upset about it, but I do think we need to have some other folks at the table as we seek to solve these issues, so that every year, we're not going to Hillside High School and watching young girls and young boys talk about how they're getting shot at home. And then, we're kinda like hands-tied about it. So, that's the only one that we didn't go to, and the same way they came up, the Safety and Wellness Task Force, if I gotta sit down and put pen to paper with a couple of people in this room, and figure out who the 11 people are, or the 15 people are, or the 17 people are, I have absolutely no problem doing that, and I would hope that my board, well, I know that my board would support me in creating a task force like that. So, that's my only one. So, if y'all just give me my last thing, we can all go home.
Ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all. And not to put anyone on the spot, but I will ask Ms. Crystal Harris to get with our new director of My Brother's Keeper, and I'm sure that they will figure out a way to, to make this happen. Did you wanna say something, General Manager, I mean, County Manager Pierce?
Is that, in the ARPA funding, there were some programs that were targeted for young men of color, and when we come back to share with the board the dollar allocations by category, whether it was for programming for mentoring, or educational support, we'll also elevate that as well.
Oh, and now I see Andy Merrick back. I don't know how, you're so short, I didn't see you. Andy's sitting back there. The last thing I asked for was a more, a bit more of an expand, everybody doesn't get to sitting on the economic development conversations that we get to have in closed session, but we, we have expanded some of the things. This has been a really creative board, and what we asked for, and as you saw with Ken Power, we got a lot of those things. It's not even really my idea, it was idea Commissioner Carter's, and I don't even know if she remembers it, but since she don't, I would say it was mine. I would love, I would love if we would just develop a fund. I don't know how we would do it, Andy, I know we got to work with you, but a lot of these tax incentives that we set aside, it would be really cool if we could set aside a fund and say, "All right, we'll give you an additional tax incentive if you pay $10,000 or $15,000 into this," and then, that's what we use to fund the Bulls Initiative. That's what I would love to do, to, to feed this workforce development pipeline, and there are other counties who are doing it. So, if we could add some type of fund, or set up a fund with our economic development incentives, and then, that would be a way for us to, for, uh, fund the workforce development that's being done by the Bulls Initiative as we expand it. So, see, my work, like, not costing anything at all, I'm trying to build money elsewhere. Thank you for that idea, Commissioner Carter, that is no longer yours.
All right. Who wants to go next? Joanne, you got something?
I just wanted to say, Commissioner Burns, I'm wondering if you were in meetings with Director Harris and I. One of the parts of the, pieces of the work for the My Brothers Keeper position is walking out that equity plan, the My Brothers Keeper Alliance Equity Plan, which requires a coalition of organizations that are serving males of color. And so, that potentially, in essence, would be this group or task force that would be focused on the issues, the structural systemic issues that face males of color, and the strategies, and eight-pronged approach to really ensuring that those currently are achieving better outcomes, but then, also addressing issues across the board. So, that is already happening, just wanted to let you know that. And you're right, it doesn't cost very much to do. However, there might be, you know, some cost associated with that. So, thank you.
Okay. You wanna go next?
Yeah, so before I focus on my priorities, I just wanted to share kinda where my head is at, just after, you know, spending this day and a half, just trying to focus on where we're at. And I really, I just wanna thank the staff for all the information that you all have provided to us, and all the work that you obviously put into making this a really, you know, helpful, you know, informative day, you know, just the day and a half, the food, everything was so beautiful, the way it was decorated with the tablecloths, just, just everything. Really appreciate everybody. You know, my takeaways from just everything I've heard and looking at all the information is, you know, that we're, again, so lucky with Durham County in terms of our, our high We're, you know, making progress on reducing the poverty rate for adults and children. But I think where we really, for me, that, I think for me, the essential thing is, our, our challenge is creating equitable shared prosperity. I mean, we're still seeing that even though we have the highest GDP, our wages, our actual wages, average wages are still not where they should be for the, for the GDP that we are creating. So, in other words, for me, it's like our residents, we still have a real disparity with not all of our residents benefiting from the great jobs that we are creating in this county, and the amount of wealth that we're generating. So, when I think about what are our priorities for me, it's, it's going back to, okay, how can we address this underlying, the underlying issues around share, equitable shared prosperity? And the other thing I wanted to say is that one thing we haven't talked today is about Medicaid expansion. And I think that we should talk about it, because, first of all, it's gonna have an impact on our budget. We're gonna need a lot of positions in DSS to process the applications if we have, which thank, pray to God, that we have Medicaid expansion, but it's gonna, you know, we're gonna have at least, the estimates are 30,000 more people... but it's gonna, you know, we're gonna have at least, the estimates are thirty thousand more people, applications to process. So I just wanna put that out there, that we should have a discussion in the future about that. What does that really look like? And this is something that we're talking about on the DSS Board, and it's being talked about statewide, because we need resources from the state. But also to think about the opportunities when we look at gaps in our system of care, our health disparities, like, oh my gosh, there's, like, there's gonna be so many opportunities now when we really have everybody having access to physical and mental health care. How does it impact mental health, substance use, our, our criminal justice system? So I, I just hope we can set aside time to talk about that and, and plan for that. But, so for me, when I think about, if, what are our priorities, like, I am so proud, like, all of the things that I've, I just feel like our staff, you are just knocking it out of the park with the work that you all are doing. And what's, what I see reflected back is really getting into systems work, and, you know, whether it's reaching back out into the community, or partnering with our larger partners like Duke, or whatever, it, it just, I, it just like really feels to me like it's really happening, and we have to keep working away with, we'll keep chipping away at this approach, because we just don't have all the resources here. And we also don't necessarily have the capacity, or are the best people, to deliver the resources. So the way that we're approaching things, you know? Um, but, so when I think about, again, getting back to how do we do shared prosperity, I think the most important thing is our education-to-work pipeline, because that is the way we're going to change people's lives, is through education and getting them into the good-paying jobs, so they can afford housing and food and childcare. So I think we're on the right track with the Bulls Initiative, and we need to think of ways to strengthen that, whether it's the MOUs, or go, you know, creating more tracks, developing the pipeline. Commissioner Long brought up about having pipelines into the jobs that we need for Durham, with apprenticeships and internships. But how do we really think about that idea of the work, education-to-work pipeline? And, you know, pre-K is part of it, because that's where it all starts. There was a Washington Post article last night about the human brain, and it really, oh my gosh, like, if we don't get these kids early on with the brain development, I mean, it's just really hard. So, so really, and, but I really wanna understand where we're at with our Durham pre-K, with the childcare issue, because that's preventing women from being in the workforce. I shared that article, the New York Times piece about the CHIPS incentives, but it's all around childcare, because women can't get into the workforce if we don't have the childcare. And I think we did a great first step with Kemp Power, they're doing childcare, like, how do we really, it can't just be us doing childcare. It need, we need the businesses in our community doing it. So, so, so anyway, education, but that includes pre-K for me, um, and maternal health, because that's where we have the healthy babies. The second thing I would say is, um, is, is around housing. We have to have housing for every type of person in our community, because we can't deal with, you can't even have a good education, or deal with substance use, mental health, anything, if you don't have housing. And so I do think the county has a role to play with housing. When we've analyzed our system of care, that's the thing that's came up with the update for the Sequential Intercept Map, that we need, you know, transitional housing, we need supportive housing. Some of it, for our Familiar Faces Initiative that I'm working on nationally, we, we, that is who is sitting on our streets. That is sitting in our jails, in our ERs. They are people who need permanent support, and we have to invest in that. It's, it's, for me, it's like a human rights issue. Um, so, um, and then I wanna go back to things that Duane had suggested years ago, which is community land trust model, and investing in housing repair, how we keep people in their homes. And then I, because you had asked for three things, so I'm, I'm trying to honor that. But, the, the, the third, the third, my third thing is around system of care. Um, i- is really looking at our crisis response, how people are getting access to mental, physical health. Um, and we're really starting to understand that, and I would like to see us expand the HART program to be countywide. I'm sorry the sheriff isn't here, but I actually discussed this with him, he supports it. Um, so that we, um, so I hope that we'll follow up with him on that, because that will free up his staff to really work on, you know, the things that they need to focus on. So those are my three big things.
Well, I also want to, um, say thanks to our staff. I, I have really felt heard. First of all, I feel like we are good listeners, and I've really tried to listen intently and have learned so much from your presentations, and one of the things I learned is that you are listening to us too. I truly, really do feel like you're, um, understanding what our priorities are, and are, are working so hard to enact those. And I appreciate the manager for having that kind of mindset, and I really appreciate our staff too, for, for making it happen. I am organizing my thoughts at this time in a similar way, maybe, to Wendy, in that she said, you know, her priorities somehow or another rest on how can we achieve shared prosperity for all across Durham. You know, that, when we, whenever there's a campaign, that's what people talk about, because that is what we want in Durham. Um, and it's just like how to get there. And for me, I always come back to what I think of as the magic triangle. You know, if we have good education outcomes, then you have good health outcomes, and then that also leads to good wealth outcomes. And so, you know, how to invest in those three areas, it's, you know, they're all very interconnected and so at a very high level, I think a lot about that. I also think a lot about investing in education, um, because I really do believe the jobs, the education and jobs pipeline is, is critical for prosperity, um, starting at least at pre-K, actually before. And it, it just seems like that is a system through which we can work. It's another public system, public school system, through which we can work, and we can reach lots of children, over thirty-three thousand, and their families. So I, that is one reason I tend to gravitate towards education investments. So, but having said all that, I, I think that basically my top priority comes down to policies, programs, investments that will strengthen economic support for families. So families and children. Um, and there are, that's a broad category, right? And, and I think I mentioned this at our retreat, that I just really would like for us to knock that completely out of the park in Durham. We can really get prenatal to three right in Durham, and, you know, includes the young people and their families. And in order to do so, um, I mean, it's really important to do so, because Wendy's mentioned this too, the brain, you know, all the development is happening in those first three years. Over a million neurons a second are being formed, and if they're not, then you're not gonna have a chance later. And, you know, Heckman and other economists have shown that investments at, at, at these early years are the, they pay off the best, there's the biggest payoff there. So I just really hope that we will get together with our staff that's working on this prenatal to age three. They were here yesterday, you know, from Cooperative Extension, and Kate DeLander, um, and Jess Busque, I think, from the Health Department, who's working on the ACIS. Did I get her name right? I think, anyway, y'all know who I'm talking about. Um, that superstar. You know, to, to do some more of this collaborative thinking, and then bringing recommendations to us for what would be the prenatal to three investments that you all would recommend. There is a prenatal to age three policy roadmap that is for the nation, and it has a whole section for North Carolina, and I could pull out some things that I think make sense, but I'd really like to know from, you know, staff, what you guys think would be the, the biggest payoffs for us. And I think we're doing a lot of it already, you know, the Durham pre-K. Uh, we don't have to do a whole bunch of new stuff necessarily. We could continue to invest in what we're already doing, that we, you know, has been so important to us in the past, because we know that it has the potential to affect so many areas of child's trajectory as they become an adult. And so we can continue to invest in those things. The home visitings that we do, and assessments on, on, with assessments of the family's current situation, and what they need, when a child is born, you know, like, getting, making that assessment happen in that, or, in that early window, and that we have a comprehensive system of care for families of children between birth and age three. I just, I think we can do a better job there. And really, though, this brings me back to, in a, in a, in a more concrete, tangible way, the, the, my policy priority, which is compensation, and I say employee compensation, and it does start there as a county commissioner, thinking about, well, what are we paying our Durham County employees? What are we paying our public employees, you know, including the school, those in the school system? Because that's a concrete way to put money in people's pockets. And so to me, that, I, I just consider any decision we make to be within the framework that it's a human right for a person who works hard forty hours a week to be able to afford to pay rent or a mortgage, to be able to afford food, to afford childcare, um, transportation, you know, all of these things, medicine, medical care. So, you know, we shouldn't have to think about whether we're gonna pa- pay a living wage. That should be a decision that is understood, and, and we move forward, you know, within that framework. So that's why that's my top priority. And I think that in other ways, besides wages, this greater, the guaranteed basic income that Nita and Brenda are sort of championing for us, I think that's a way to, to, you know, make concrete contributions to a family's economic security. And that when we're considering how to implement that, I hope we will consider, you know, families as, uh, part of the sort of target population for whom the guaranteed basic income might be eligible. And I think that we should take a look at the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit's proposal around that. You know, they are now suggesting that we consider a, a cash payment to our most cost-burdened renters, and that might be a way to go about the, you know, selection of the population for the guaranteed basic income. It could be our most cost-burdened family renters, just a thought. So, I mean, I'm just gonna hold that up. That's my main priority, is economic support for families, and, you know, various ways we can do that. I'd like to ask our staff for feedback, um, and I'd like to move forward with the guaranteed basic income, and I'd like for us to get a real solid plan, um, that will take, you know, five years for how to pay public employees a wage that would allow them to live in Durham, uh, as calculated either by the MIT co- you know, wa- living wage in, in the calculator, or the, um, uh, the federal poverty guidelines, but those are so abysmally loads. But I understand why we, maybe we want to use that. Then some other questions, oh, and so that just, I just wanna say there, I wanna reemphasize that. I think it's really important that we have a plan. I know we cannot pay twenty-three or twenty-four or more dollars an hour next year. But we can start, and what we need is a comprehensive plan for how to get there. And it needs to include, um, you know, how we will address all these things you all mentioned today, the compression issues, et cetera, et cetera. They're gonna increase the cost beyond just what it costs to pay that actual living wage to X number of employees. And, and so I'm hoping that with the consol- the, the, uh, the compen- the compensation classification study, and further discussion about how to pay living wages, that we will be presented with a real plan, that we can enact over time. And then some things that we didn't talk about, that I hope that will come up at some point during budget, are, um, the stormwater utility fee discussion, and you guys probably have all this on your list, but I just wanna make sure that we're, it's, it's coming forward still. Um, that, the issue of benefits for jointly appointed, appointed board and commission members, that I mentioned. Um, the Coalition for Affordable Housing and Transit's proposals about, around, uh, most cost-burdened renters. This idea of the farm campus, uh, you know, I hope we'll talk about that some more during budget. And any money that is missing, I don't mean missing, really, I don't really quite know how to, any money that might still be out there that we're not thinking about, because either I forgot, we forgot, or maybe we don't really even understand enough to know about it. And, and so like, some fund balance, you know, is there some money and fund balance somewhere that we really should be investing in our community? Or maybe there's additional ARPA dollars, or grant dollars, or maybe it's FEMA money, you know, that we haven't seen yet? Or, um, those are the main things that come to mind. But I'm just wondering about that, because we're always looking for more ways to invest in our people. And then, I guess my last question, point is, how the heck are we learning how to hula hoop? You know, what, what are we doing to figure out a way to sunset what's not working? How are we identifying those things? Are we having the discussion at all? Um, and, you know, I hope, I hope our staff is, and that you'll bring those things forward for, you know, consider, considering not funding. We may say no, sort of like today happened, right? I, I said, I really don't want to defund something, and that may happen. But I do think that, that those are really important conversations for us to have. It's almost like a zero-based budgeting approach that no one really does, I don't think, but, um, something, you know, along those lines. Okay, that's it for me, that was a lot, thanks.
You need a nap now. Commissioner Long?
Thank you, uh, so much again, Stan, for this amazing two days of information. I, um, am really excited about a couple of things, and then there's some things that, you know, as we have more budget discussions, I hope that they come up during the term. Sorry if you hear a loud noise behind me, I am by an Air Force base, but they keep having planes fly by. Um, but one of my, one of the things I'm, uh, still really excited about is, you know, I'm grateful that staff came forward with the eighteen forty increase for our county employees. I do hope, and, uh, I will be pushing for us to get that, uh, for our DPS employees as well, uh, depending on, you know, what their budget asks, how much of it is already, like, what increase they're already asking for in their budget ask. Other than things, Wendy mentioned it, like, yeah, the pipeline program that I had brought up, I really hope that we can have further discussion about how to create that program, because, you know, I think that'll address some of the last salaries discussion that we were having in the fund balance that keeps coming back to fund balance. Um, it's great to have money coming back to fund balance, but those are also positions we need to get filled, especially in, um, our public health sphere, in our emergency services, like our EMS and fire marshals, if we can figure out a program as soon as possible with Durham Tech. I know President Buckston is interested in partnering with us, uh, to fill these roles, uh, and train Durham County residents for these roles, and provide them with living salaries, uh, through this way. I know we're gonna have further discussion around the housing piece. Uh, one thing that I hope will be part of that conversation, I'm assuming it will, because I know managers will, it's always on top of everything, is, um, I know when we had the policy retreat at Duke, we talked about housing, and one of the things that Perry raised to us that hasn't been lost on me is the fact that this is a very heavy lift for our county staff to take on, uh, in housing. And we all wanna support housing, and our staff wanna support housing, but how can we have a better collaboration with the city? Because they have much larger staff capacity to handle these projects. Um, and whether that means that the county is able to financially support these projects, but, uh, taking that weight off of our staff, and, you know, providing the financial support to the city to manage, uh, those projects. I hope that's part of our housing discussion. The, another thing that we haven't gotten a chat, a chance to talk about, and it's more of a long-term discussion, but I feel like this is something that can help us stretching our budget and looking for more ways to be efficient, like Keith likes, is the County-City Resource Study. Um, I think, I don't know- I think, I don't know where we're at with this manager's role, I know we've talked about it a little bit, of doing this study of county and city government functions and see where is there overlap between the two of us and trying to, you know, merge areas where we can to save residents' money and saving the county and city government money by not having two people, two entities working on the same work. Other two areas that we did not discuss during this, but I hope it comes up as we keep discussing the, discussing the budget, is the reproductive care, and I apologize, I should have brought this up during, you know, our, it's kind of connected to maternal care. Yesterday, of the reproductive care fund or services that we could potentially provide through Durham County, I hope we can have a conversation about that because I think that's really important. I know there's concerns about whether we'll still be a state that provides, that has abortion being legal. I want to remind everyone that we still have enough votes to protect the governor's veto. So I hope that we keep that in mind as we have this conversation. And then the last item, I know moving fast, unless you guys want me to go slower, I can take up more time. The last item was the immigrant and refugee services slash welcome center. This is something that, you know, we talked about last year that we didn't see expanding the program last year as plausible because we were still working on, we had lost the coordinator, they had left the county and now we hired Niall. And I would love to bring him in to get a formal presentation from Cooperative Extension and Nialy to talk about what services they've been able to provide our refugee and immigrant communities, what services they still see a gap for that we should be providing. And I lied, I actually do have one last one, but it's more just a comment, is I'm really excited for this grant coordinator position. I know it's kind of outside of, I don't know if it's really this budget, but just in general, because this is something that managers well, really, really grateful for you for stepping in and bringing this role on, because it was like the first conversation we had when you came was, we need a grant coordinator. And I just love how like in sync we were and how forward-thinking you were when we had that discussion about how much money we can bring into the county if we have someone who's there to apply for grants and in so many different areas within county government. And that is it for me.
Well, we want all of that. All, it's, it's, it's one of my, one of my former commissioners across the state that says, all that, all that and more, not more, more. So, you know, I want to also thank the staff for all the incredible work that you do. I mean, this is, we, we put out so much stuff and, and, and you just go to work and we appreciate it. You know, one of the things that I am so appreciative of is the Hey Ty Reborn and the investment that was put into that this year to work with our most neglected, most cast-out people in this community, to help them to be able to get their lives back on uneven keel and be able to get jobs, to be, get trained and be able to work and make a living. And I am so appreciative that that is in operation today, people are working in that. And I just, I, I really appreciate that because when you lift up the least of thee, you lift up the entire community. So we, and that also helps with crime, you know, we talk about crime prevention and if we're not reaching to the people that are in need the most, we're just, we're just talking. So that I am, I really appreciate, we've talked about so many things today. Mental health is one of the things that we will be having a conversation at a work session about community mental health. So we'll know more about that and how we'll get that funded. We've talked about the guaranteed income, that's a conversation that we got to have going forth. When we talk about zero to five or zero to three prenatal, I, I believe that we have to start before pre-K. Commissioner Carter talked about that, we've got to start before pre-K. And there is evidence to show that and there's a lot of work going, that's going on across the state and nationally around those areas. With the housing piece, the, the city is really wanting to work with us around affordable housing, so it's not, it's not a lift that we have to take on as, by ourselves for the county. So we've got a lot of stuff on our plate here and I, the other thing that I appreciate is the support that we gave the Boys and Girls Club and there is more coming that in collaboration with the city that we'll need to look to see what we need to do for the Boys and Girls Club. Because all of the things that we're talking about right now is about families. If parents cannot thrive, children cannot thrive. So we have to work with the families to make sure that they have what they need so that they can take care of the children. Transportation, regional transit, that's a huge conversation that we all have to be drilled down and, and see what we can do to make sure that we've got regional transit going forth. And that's a long-range conversation. Let's see what else that, water quality and the environment. I mean, we've gotten a lot of conversations, a lot of concern about what's going on in our environment without water. That's a conversation that we're not having a whole lot, but we need to have more. So all of these things and we talk about equity, we talk a lot about equity, but do we do a lot about equity? And that's a conversation that we have to ask ourselves and system, system-wide, not individually, but system-wise. The person, the speaker at the health summit at the NACO conference said, individually, we're not healthy if our county is not healthy. So how healthy is our county when we don't have clean water or clean air? And babies can't eat? And mental health is a problem? When our little kids are getting guns and shooting people, how healthy are we? And I'll leave it right there. Thank you. Anything else for anybody else? Commissioner Jacobs?
I had a question, there were a lot of slide presentations over the past few days that weren't necessarily in our Legisstar. So if we, they should be?
Yes ma'am, they're, they're broken out individually amongst the, the different, there's like seven different-
I didn't, so like for instance, the DSS one was not in mine.
So we can upload-
Yeah, some of the individual folks who presented, I didn't have, I can, I can let you know which ones I'm missing.
The, yes ma'am.
I'm missing that one too, actually.
Yeah, there were some that we didn't have.
Mine wouldn't open, the one that, from you yesterday Keith, and then the Derek Bowens wouldn't open for me today. Said not found or something.
Yeah, I can let you know which ones.
I sent you a copy and I tried to, it opened for me in Legisstar, but by all means, I'll take a run-through and look through, but Legisstar, I know I loaded last night both of the presentations from yesterday and today that had literally everything you've seen. So those are uploaded, plus in each one of the slides for different portions, there should be broken out extra specific slide presentations and all of it should be PDF, but we'll take a look and make sure all of it works and is available to you.
And if there are any that you can't open, let us know.
Yeah, well, I'll let you know, yeah.
I have one more question. Just, yeah.
Go ahead. I just wanted to list three things after listening to everybody, just for future conversations. One is looking at potential additional revenue sources for the county. One was, you know, obviously the grants, but we've also, we are going to need to increase our, our transit tax to pay for a lot of things. That's in our, our transportation plan that we're adopting. I mean, the 2050 plan that we've adopted says that we're going to have one and a half cent sales tax. The other is the, the quarter cent prepared meal tax, which we tried once, but, so I'm just saying, what, what, I would love to hear from staff about ideas about other potential revenue sources for the county. That was alluded to by, by both Brenda and Heidi. Also, and Commissioner Alom referenced this in a certain way, but I think one of the biggest assets that we have is our publicly owned land, so city, county and school land. How can we do a study or an assessment of what we all have together and a policy about how we use that to leverage community benefits? Again, looking at what, what are we, what do we have to work with? And the third is around what are areas for real collaboration with others? We're doing that with the Bull City United, our, you know, that's something the county's running, you know, with the city and the county, the long-term homeowner tax credit city and county doing. But, you know, we've talked about recreational opportunities, just opportunities for youth is a way we can work together, the schools, the city and the county. Gun safety, you know, all of these unlocked, you know, guns and unlocked cars, things, what are, what are more ways that we can work together to achieve some of our goals? So that, those are just three things I'd like to hear more ideas about.
Veterans. I haven't heard that conversation lifted up the last two days, veterans. Hey Lois. Hello Lois. Veterans, is there anything, anything in our budget that you're asking for around veterans? Come on to the table now Lois. We haven't heard anything about our veterans.
That's right. I will say, one of the, one of the housing projects that we're, the city's bringing us is for veterans.
This opportunity, as I heard about, and I have heard it before today, about Derek's project, I certainly hope, I know you wasn't ready for this, but I certainly hope you all will entertain relocating veteran services. Where we are is not ideal for our veterans. It is difficult for them in terms of mobility, they're challenged, having to walk from the parking lot and we're on the very end of the building. They're exhausted and frustrated by the time they get to us. So we would certainly like you all to entertain moving us to a place that is much more accessible, wheelchair accessible for our veterans. So I hope you all will entertain that as you consider that space we have available. We are asking this year for three FTEs, two new VSOs and admin person. Last, well, I guess it was earlier this week or last Thursday when a new ACM wanted to meet with us and I have a VSO that was out, so you know, I'm on deck. I hold a title as director, but I'm a VSO. So Carolina Arbor's had an event, had a VSO that was out, I'm on deck. We're out there all day taking claims. I can never do what my title designed me to do and I'm cool with that. I love doing what I do and that's serving our nation's veteran. So we're having to be on deck all the time. We're small departments, but yet we're tasked with doing everything else the large departments are having to do. And we don't have the human capital to, to do that with. And I know you guys gave us a person last year, we are grateful for that. We offered a position, person accepted on the 13th hour, they took a offer someplace else. We're due to have our new person come on board on the 20th. So I hear Keith when he talks about money's not being used, it is a process. Our vehicle being wrapped, went to a company for four months, they helped me out, had to go back to the other company that I left because they helped me out the year before. So hopefully we'll have our vehicle wrapped, our contract done hopefully by the end of March. But we, we do need the folks and every year we ask for staff and you all will give us one when we need two. And we're tired of playing catch-up. I have a staff that has been with me since I hired them. Unfortunately, I had to help one person find their happy home someplace else, but I have longevity with our staff. And sure, we like to have more money, but that's not what I'm about right now. It's about having the enough staff to meet the needs of, of our veterans here. It's oxymoron when we go out and do outreach or we do more advertisement, folks come in, but then we are here. You all know, I, I don't just work because we always overwork, I work because I like working late at night. But I want to do what I'm designed to do and that's not always being on the front line. And I absolutely love it because it's difficult to say no. As a veteran myself, I want to be treated well and so I treat our veterans well so I don't put off that, well, I got other duties to do. Unfortunately, that's not how a leader should be doing. I should be leading and not always on the front line. So I'm asking you all to give it grave consideration this year when we come before you all, you see our budget. Please accommodate us because I know there are other departments, I just have to say this since I have you all as an audience, when I hear about money's being turned in in the year, I asked for $35,000 for a vehicle and I didn't get it and public health had to buy it from me, that shouldn't have happened. So I hope you guys will think about us this time and let us meet our needs. We have a young lady that's our PA, processing assistant, she's bilingual. I certainly like to advance her, so we're asking for a receptionist. We provide curbside service, I don't know if any other department that does that, but we provide curbside service and that's me and my five-inch heel, I'm maybe not running down the steps, but catching the elevator down the steps. We have those folks to keep them from having to navigate that parking and not just because of the parking, I think we would do it anyway as a result of COVID, we had to find another way to satisfy those needs. So we provide that curbside service. Call us up, you need something, why make them trek all the way from the parking lot just to get a signature signed or something like that? So we tell them, call us, tell us what you're making, all of your car is, and we'll be downstairs to meet you. So we're doing what we can to meet those needs. Now, we're going to be asking you all to help us continue to meet those needs so that we can get out in the community and do what we need to do. I don't care what building we're in or where we're located, we should not be sitting behind the desk waiting for them to come to us. We should be out in the community doing what we're supposed to do and what you all have passed us to do and what the community is paying our salaries to do is serving our nation's veterans.
Commissioners, you heard, now pass the plate. We got it. Thank you, thank you. All right. All right, I don't have anything else. That's it? You got something? Alrighty, well that concludes our day and a half retreat. Thank you all so much for investing the time in this. Yeah, wonderful.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner Alom. Don't forget, we have boxed lunches over in the innovation lab.
I love it because you're too professional to bite. I will continue to test your resolve.